We are starting tonight here at six o'clock. Uh, we are going to begin with a public hearing. The public hearing is going to be in accordance with RSA one ninety-eight, golden twenty dash C. And this public hearing is being held on June fifth, twenty twenty-five to approve the addition of the dishwasher replacement project to be funded from the South Heaton Cooperative School District. Maintenance expendable trust fund. Period. So I think we'll start by. Getting an executive summary from administration.
Yeah, thank you um for that introduction. So yes, the dishwasher replacement project was initially discussed as part of the budget process. At the board as well as advisory finance committee. It was hoped that dishwasher would be able to be funded from the food service budget. Or potentially as a, an end of year project. Uh neither of those options are viable. So um as I mentioned at the last board meeting, we would likely be bringing this forward. Um to add dishwasher project to the list of projects that were already approved by the board. That were included in the capital needs analysis and C I P. So uh Roger Preston did some work to refine the quotes. For the already approved projects and was able to realize savings. To be able to fund uh dishwasher replacement project. Um in for an amount of up to twenty-eight thousand dollars. So there's no additional um funds that are being requested uh to be taken from the expendable trust fund. And this is just to ask the board to approve the addition of this project.
Is that it, Jim?
Yes.
All right, great. Any comments from the board?
Wasn't there a um? In the, in the public hearing section, there's sixty thousand, this is mentioned in the notes. And it also includes, well, it's maybe it's a video that sounds about classroom furniture. So that also a part of this public hearing?
So that was, that was included in the prior list of projects. So there's no change to the list of projects.
So we have sixty thousand. Uh pre-approved projects, is that what they're saying? And of that?
We have.
Am I misinterpreting that or?
Yep, that's okay. So we have um. Up to, I believe we did six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um from the expendable trust fund for all of the projects that are in that. Yep, skylights, fire replacement system, generator, furniture, immovable walls, the exterior. Uh walls, metal panel repairs. Stephen had a question about that, but I answered it in email. So those were all uh already pre-approved by the board. Up to that six hundred and twenty thousand. So all we've done is we've been able to revise. The cost of some of those projects to realize some savings. To be able to include the dishwasher. From those same funds. So that's all we're doing.
Okay. The board notes were a little bit off.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, good and square in my head.
Got it.
Appreciate the explanation.
No problem.
And do any other board members have any questions? Don't forget to address the chair first so we can make things nice and organized. No? Steve, Christie? Good? Okay. Um having said that, we see that we have, oh, I have one question before we do this. Did seeing that there, we have um. We have uh representation in the audience. Did S F A C? Was S F A C part of the? The form discussion here?
So as part of um the more article to um request funds from the maintenance trust fund. Uh the C N A was part of the discussion with advisor science. It was part of the. Um the presentation, uh specifically the public hearing presentation as well as the. And all of these projects are listed specifically on the slide that was included. And the. And the more articles were who by advisor.
Okay. Thanks. All right, seeing that there's no other comments or questions from the board, you could join. Um any uh public comment?
Great, I'm wearing my. So he can find that in question. You know, I wouldn't have known about the change um about the funding for the dishwasher had I not seen the. Um very um extensive agenda and and. So uh my thought was, and I wasn't sure um that um. I was wondering where, where the finance committee fit into things like this because, you know, we, we tend to um. You know, want to be a part of the, the budget process, obviously. And when there's a change of this kind, I just was wondering if it might be like just a courtesy. To, to notify everybody on the committee that this was happening. Not that we would be making that decision, obviously. But um it's just that we thought one thing was happening and something else um actually um occurred. So. I, I keep thinking that our responsibility continues uh past the March election. I don't know that for sure, but. Um I, I just think it would be um. A, a courtesy to, to share with the financial committee. That's it on there.
Thank you, Jeanie. Anything else? Anything else? Okay. Um Steve, do we have anybody online that um? With that, that participate and? Just to be mindful, um if there are people online, um. Same, same process to state your name and address and identify yourself, please.
We have one person online, no hand up.
No hand up. Okay. So any additional commentary from administration? No? All right, I think I ended the public hearing by, I have to roll call. No, I think you just closed it, right? Yeah, okay. Nothing else from the public? All right, great. That closes the public hearing. You all set? Good. Okay, that closes the public hearing in accordance with RSA one ninety-eight, golden twenty dash C, being held tonight on June fifth, twenty twenty-five. Okay, at six oh seven P M, I'm going to call to order the uh Sohegan Cooperative Board Meeting for June fifth, twenty twenty-five. The first order of business is to uh affirm the agenda. Has all of them, board members seen the agenda? Yes? They're good, yes. We good? Okay, um let's just take a, a quick vote on forming the agenda. All in favor? Opposed? And the eyes have it, so we've affirmed the agenda. Sorry, did you? Did I miss you?
When I tried to have a vote to approve your agenda last week, everybody ate me for lunch.
I know, but it's because you have seventeen people. Probably why it was.
No, they didn't want to vote.
Oh, right, right. Yeah, yeah. Uh okay, so the agenda is confirmed. Um. The next, uh, the next thing I'd like to do before I move on to the, the next item is. I know we've already lavished this guy extensively as he exits the school system, but. This is, this is your last official board meeting, right, for S A U thirty-nine, Steve?
It is.
So if we could just give a quick round of applause to Steve for everything he's done. That's a big deal.
I know about that, but thank you.
Yes, well, for some of us, it's definitely a big deal, so. Thank you for that. Okay, now, the next item is um. The board needs to approve uh the action item related to the public hearing, right? So. Right, so do I have a motion from anybody on the board to approve? The um, let's see where it is. Yeah, to approve the addition of the dishwasher replacement project. For the C N A C I P projects funded from the South Heaton Cooperative School District School Maintenance E T F. To be completed and expensed in the twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six fiscal years.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, um. Any discussion?
Could I, I got just a question for, not specifically for this, but.
Yeah.
We have had some on and then on again, off again discussions about expanding our C N A to include.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
Kitchen items, athletic facility, durable goods. So that, just to note that that conversation will continue as we. As we um evaluate those needs and, and seek to fund them. Or at least discuss funding them through the something mechanism like this.
Yeah, so actually I have um two planned days this summer to work with. Athletics and facilities and then food service and facilities. To relook at those um capital needs analysis plans to build that in. So that work is already planned.
That's excellent. And we'll, we'll technology and, and the vehicles and the existing.
Technology has their own.
They have their own.
A vehicle has their own plan.
They do, yes.
They do, yes. Yeah.
Okay, but obviously, I guess then the question is, they're also looking at their plans and keeping them updated.
They are doing that.
They are doing.
I'm, I'm there to assist, but these two is going to be a collaboration between um facilities and the, the two directors. Yep, so we'll, you'll see those revised plans um as part of the budget process next year.
Thank you.
Yep.
Looking forward to it.
Yep.
Awesome. You good, John?
Yes.
Anybody else have any other questions or discussion? Okay, we have a first, we have a second. All in favor? All opposed? Five oh. Okay, now we're moving right to um. Public input, public comment. Again, if you wish to speak during the public comment session, in-person guests will be allowed to speak first. Once we go through all the in-person guests, we may open it up for virtual speakers on Zoom. In order to speak, please do the following, raise your virtual hand. This is for the people who are virtual, by the way. Um enter your full name via your avatar profile. When speaking, turn your camera on. Say your full name, town of residence. Uh when these are complete, you will have three minutes to speak. Okay, so let's open it up for live public comment first for the folks here.
Back again, uh Jamie Lou, three schools street. Um different topic. Um I. Um was excited to see that there was a um. Constitution Interpretation Committee and the report that had ensued, so I'm anxious to hear the discussion. Um it did remind me. Of the need to clarify the roles and responsibilities of the community council. And um I just wanted to remind folks, because this is always an image that I have kept in my head. About um how South Heaton is governed. Um and I think of it as a three-legged stool. Um the administration, the board, and community council. And um it's been my impression um over the last, I don't know, five or so years. Um that um the, the leg that has community council. Um that's holding up the stool is getting shorter. It's starting to get middled away. Um and um it, that's concerns me. Because I think it has always had a very important role to play. Um and part of the, hopefully, the, the work of the interpretation committee will be to clarify um that role. Um so that um it's, it's clear to all of the folks involved. Um but I do want to make sure that we um do our very best to not create a wobbly stool. Um by um by dismissing or um. Somehow diminishing um the role of community council. So that's one. Yeah, the other thing that I wanted to mention um is, is that I noticed in the. This was really great reading, by the way, this uh this agenda. And um my husband actually pointed out to me that um. There were twenty more students that came into South Heaton. In the last year, I believe it was, uh which is significant. And um. I think it's an important stat um to share with the public because. You know, people are always complaining that um our numbers are diminishing, but it turns out they're not. Um so I just wanted to make sure that that became um public information. Um just because it, it helps us all understand the diamond dynamics of South Heaton.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanie.
Okay, tonight you give it to. Yeah, my name is Will Lou. I live on three schools straight. And I'm currently a member of community council, but I'm here as just as a, a regular uh. Uh citizen tonight. Um if you remember, about six months ago, I came to you all. And talked about two things. Uh one is um. I've been in contact with. A graduate of South Heaton. Courtney Banghart, who graduated, I think in ninety-six. Who is the uh head, uh women's basketball coach down at University of North Carolina. And I've been thinking of, well, I have invited her up. To South Heaton. And have her come in and talk to students about life after uh. South Heaton, you know, what expectations and all that. And we were going back and forth, the timing, her basketball schedule ended in. April, and that's about time student or uh senior projects kicked in and. We just ran out of time this year, but we talked about having her come up. In December, because University of North Carolina plays Boston College, up at Boston College this year. So she'll be up in the area, visiting family who uh they live out in. Jeffrey Center. Uh along with that journey. So I thought it would be a good thing to invite her back. Also to invite maybe some of the um. You know, get a bus or whatever of the uh. Uh women's basketball team here at South Heaton to go down and actually see the. Basketball game. And usually, they play at the Fleet Center whenever they come down. But I thought that would be a neat thing and maybe after, I've asked her if we can go back into the locker room. After the ballgame, just to see. How a, you know, a, a first-class basketball team operates. And I thought that would be a good thing. So I, I'm going to keep pushing that and pushing that. And just to let you all know, I'll bring this up to community council, see if we can get their support next, next session. So that's, that's the first thing that I uh updated you on six months ago. So it's still percolating through. And then the other thing that I talked about is. Uh. Experiential learning, I, uh you know, which to me means. Winter session, because right now we don't have winter session again. Uh I guess it was due to COVID. Things powered down. But I'd still like to see. Some level of experiential learning. Not so much as uh what it was whenever it was um. Uh back in the day, whenever winter session, I think was for tenth graders. Who uh went and did, you know, their week-long learning. Effort, but maybe do it for all classes, but have it shorter, have sort of a uh. Uh winter session light, if you, if you would. Uh, you know, uh appreciate that. And it'll be for all grades, not just. Sophomore, but for uh freshmen all the way through seniors. And wha- what struck me. Is, you know, whenever I've talked about that six months ago, I thought there was. Uh it would be on your possibly discussing your goals for twenty twenty-six, and I didn't see anything on. Experiential learning in the goals. For uh the next term. And I was just, it, was it considered? Uh you know, whenever I came in six months, did you talk about it? Did you? You know, discuss it at all? Or am I just uh, you know, blowing in, in here? I just think it would be an opportunity that. That the kids are, are, are missing. Because uh winter session was really pretty uh, pretty good. I know my son's winter session, he went down. And learned culinary skills down in the north end. You know, there's habitat for humanity that the students go to or did. It was just a various, you know, there's some traveled. Uh maybe it could be connected with the, the trip to Japan. Next month or next year, have that maybe a kickoff or something like that, but. All right, also, six months ago, I offered my services to sort of, if there's interest. To move it along, you know, get maybe one or two teachers involved. And discuss some ideas and a board member maybe. But if there's not any interest. And. That type of thing, then. Maybe some other time. Any, any feedback or?
Yes, no.
And I, I'll speak up, right?
I wasn't here back then, so I, I, I'm not supposed to have a back and forth. Uh what I can share with you is. Um you're the only person I've ever heard bring a, bring back winter session. So it's not a big demand that I've heard. Um I think the outside educational opportunities that we're offering right now through our trip program. Uh is phenomenal. I think we have seven or eight approved external trips on this campus within the next two years. Um that students are being afforded an opportunity to actually participate in. Um but I mean. If, if winter session was that popular and, and people wanted to come back, I would hope that that conversation would start at community council. Because I think that's really where the seed of that thing actually starts to say, can we possibly generate a program? Um let's revisit what it was formerly like, and then actually bring that over to the administration and re-propose that concept. Um from what my understanding is, no faculty are coming back saying we want it back. There's nobody to sponsor it. So it, there's a lot more complexity to that topic than just someone's blowing it off and no one's listening.
Right.
I, I know we talked about it. I know Mike has probably talked about it multiple times with his administration team. Um it's, there's no demand. And to put the type of resources and effort into something like that where there's no demand, I don't know if that'd be a really good use of our resources. But. I mean, council could be a great spot to start.
Yeah, okay, I saw, bring it up for community council next year. Okay, and also, you know, these trips that are planned. Not every average bear at the high school could afford a trip. Like to Japan, I think it's like fifty-six hundred dollars. It's. A load of money. Um. Okay, I understand that, and I'll bring this up through uh community council next year.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I think that's one of the things that we want to do tonight is talk about the Constitutional Interpretation Committee. Again, Steve's right, we're not typically supposed to go back and forth during public comment, but um. I think that's one of the, that's, that's kind of like what we're building toward. We would. There's historically been an expectation that the board, community council. Gets its power from the school board, and so the school board would hope that that would rise up from community council. But um. I guess there, there's, there's a conversation we need to have on how that works going forward, so.
Okay, so I'll, I'll bring it up, and that's probably the best place. For it, because there are community members on community council. I think there's two from Mont Vernon and three from Amherst. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I get it. Just one feedback for you too. Um. You were heard. And uh we have had more field trips, as Stephen O'Keefe was saying. That new application is kind of the last couple of years I've ever seen. And. It's been recognized in, in our meetings that we don't have a winter session anymore, but this is an approximation for the experiential learning feature. It's also been recognized publicly at previous meetings. That is expensive. And are there ways? That we could mitigate that? So maybe there's a public funding component that could pay for one of these trips for each student through a four-year career. We haven't made decisions on that. We haven't really ironed out that discussion, but the, the, the concept has been laid upon the table in some of the prior meetings this past year. And, and that was in respect of your contribution six months ago.
Okay. Good, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, do you mind if I just add a little bit of context?
Sure.
Since I have a little bit of history with this, um. Some of you were not here or didn't have kids um during this period, but um. When my daughter graduated in two thousand and two, she was, hers was the last class. Um to do a sophomore trip to D C. The entire class went to D C. Um there was a. Behavior issue on that particular um. Uh trip, which ended the sophomore trip to D C. Um and in its place, um created um pretty much from the ground up by faculty. Was winter session. Faculty were the, were the ones that drove that. So um it, I, I know. Will has talked about this even in community council, that he's. Um chatted a bit with a couple of faculty members to see if there was any interest. And I think part of the problem is that it's um, you know, a big responsibility. And um. So um I, I, I think they were elected, you know, to get back into that again. That was. It absolutely made um a difference in a lot of people's lives. And it's the most memorable thing. That, that my children participated in. They don't remember sitting in class, believe me, but they remember. The things that they did um that were, that be experiential. So I do want to um make sure that. There are components of that built into our um curriculum, so that we don't lose sight of that.
Thank you, Jeanie. Okay, anything online? Steve?
You know, I believe so, sir. See. Only one person online? The other person's actually at the meeting, so.
Okay. And no hands up? No hands up? Okay. So that will end public comment for uh this evening. I'd like to thank Jeanie and Will for their commentary. They've given a lot to the school over the years, so thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Um, all right, let's go.
Yeah, just a quick announcement. Our women's tennis team just won the state championship.
Let's go.
We have three in Mount Vernon at seven, seven thirty.
That's great.
Awesome.
Is Rick still a coach? Rick has a personal coach there?
J V's.
Oh, J V's, okay, yeah, yeah, wow. Good. So congratulations to the state championship women's tennis team from South Heaton High School. That's fantastic news. Uh. And the public gets to hear that as well as the one person who's listening to us online right now. So that's great. Um, all right, let's go on to the community council update. Do you have an update for us tonight? I think it's a great segue after what we just heard.
Hi. Uh since the last meeting, council has returned close. Um with our last meeting kind of being a celebration of the seniors and all the hard work they've done for council as they look towards graduating. Additionally, we also had our last forums of the year, where I was able to run my first forum as a communicator. Um and I'd say these four forums are relatively successful. Um I decided to take a different approach to the grants from portion of the forum. By asking students to like turn and talk with each other um for about ninety seconds about. Their experience or like any feedback for council, and then we came together as a big group. And instead of students walking up to the mics, which had been previous practice, we had a grade rep moving around the room to mic. To students whose hands were raised. And for majority of the grades, this helped them feel heard, and this was something they'd been kind of asking for um all year. We just kind of had to figure out logistically. Um I was especially pleased with the senior forum. Um. At the senior forum, myself and the senior grad reps asked their grade to reflect on their experiences as they can get in and share positive memories or places for improvement. Um and there were many insightful answers ranging from things like including Tara and Joanne's candy supply in the budget. To just thanking their peers and teachers for the funds that they've had over their four years. Um and then after forums, we wrapped up the council season. And over the summer, council is going to be involved in some of the summer renovation projects. Um. We're kind of starting to look at beginning details for that, but otherwise it will return back into September. Um and I'd also like to say again, thank you for this experience. I have greatly appreciated the opportunity to be your um student school rep. And if anyone has any questions for me regarding my experience here the past two years, um, is for free access.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh any questions from the board? Or comments, either?
I have a question. John, is, is there a? Is there a routine or a process by which this is the community count? Is what happens at our board meetings? Or translated or summarized and presented to the community council at its meetings or to its members at large, maybe in a, in a different manner? Uh so that community council is aware of decisions that we're making or that we might be making up in the coming and have. And they, they know they have an opportunity to provide their feedback. Is that, is that a process that is, is, is robust and happening or not?
That is actually kind of my job as a school board rep. That is the school board rep job is to kind of um. Be the person who communicates in between the board and council. Um so when I come here, I bring the information from council, and when I go back to council, I report back on the meeting. Um and anything I feel is worth. Absolutely. And then if there's ever anything council wants me to be sharing with the board, um, it will tell me.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Steve. So my congratulations, you're moving on from the school board role to your new facility role, and um you've done a great job this year. Really enjoyed your presentations, and I think your peers are really happy to have you represent them uh here today. What are you most excited about next year?
Um.
What do you think council is most excited about?
What council's most?
Well, you and.
Um I think I'm just excited to be taking on a new role and challenge um. And to help communicate the great work that council does um to the students and. To the community and just the whole South Heaton community. Um. I think that's very important and exciting. I think that's very important. I'm excited to kind of take on.
Want to thank you for hosting the first community council meeting up in Auburn in recent memory, so I appreciate that. And uh looking forward, excited to uh see what uh what's in store for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Steve.
Yes, thank you.
Um anyone else? John, Christie?
Anything?
I do.
I just want to make sure.
Okay, I'm sorry. John, good.
Uh over your experience in community council, how how like robust, you can do this word again, robust um. Seems apropos is the student engagement in terms of like numbers of members, members being engaged. Um feeling empowered to be a part of their their governance. Is it is it exciting and and rich? Or is it is it waned a bit? It 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 may need some help to um to reach out all. You have a perspective on that?
I would say that we have a very robust student involvement in community council. Um we have five grade reps for each grade. Um every year, we have more than five people running um for the grid rack positions. Um my grade in particular. Um I think there was probably around eight to ten people who ran um for grade rep. And additionally, we have um eleven at-large members. Um now those at-large members can be students, teachers, community members. Um the past two years I've been on council, they have been all students. Um ranging from freshmen to seniors. Um and students are very engaged and committed to council. Um we have great attendance. Um and students want to be there and want to discuss and be involved in a democratic process.
Has that forums strengthened that? Would you say?
Yeah, I would say that forums have really brought grid reps and council together. Um they have definitely been a challenge for us to look at how to engage. Um people who aren't at the meetings all the time and share the work with you, so I definitely would say that has strengthened council's bond.
Right here, thanks, appreciate it.
Great, thanks, John. And just one more time, Christie, you good? Okay, James. Yes, Steve, okay, thank you very much. We appreciate everything you've done. And on behalf of the. Or chair can't be here today, I'm sure he'd she'd echo the same thanks, so thank you. Okay. Um, next up is the consent agenda. So we have. Uh let's see. We need a motion to approve the draft minutes from the May eighth twenty twenty-five board meeting as presented, and hopefully. I mean, it goes without saying that um. You know, we send these things out and and typically, I know that everybody can't do it, but the expectation is hopefully you've gone, been able to go through this, read through everything before we come to the meeting. So that um we can kind of get through these in an expeditious and careful way. So we'll start with the May eighth twenty twenty-five draft minutes. Um do we got a motion to approve those minutes?
If I may, according to just a point of order.
Sure.
Our our practice over the past year has been to, unless somebody has a specific objective to do them all in one.
Yeah, okay.
Pull exceptions in case people want to discuss them separately.
I'm all for that. That sounds pretty good, but I like that idea.
So it would be, hey, just a survey, anyone?
Yeah.
Have a thing for the draft minutes, May eight, May twenty-nine, just one bum 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 bum, and if no one really has a thing to discuss or. Motions to make or additions or subtractions, then it's just done.
Okay, so moved. We good with that? All right, so do I get a motion to approve the consent agenda then?
So moved.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Five oh. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
All right. Now, reports received. Uh let's take this really quick. Um, we have the facilities report. The treasury report and the principal's report, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, we can take. Questions on any of the reports, if you if you have them, you know, Amy, Steve and I can answer them. I'll speak to the principal report. Uh you know, Dana is is not not here this evening, um but she did submit a report. Um. If there's any like high-level questions I'm happy to to answer, as you can see, which is which is uh. The way it should be, the principal report is very much aligned to the framework. Um you can see the amount of effort that is going into really the 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 first three pillars that we think are just really, really vital. To to the daily operations of the school. Um I do appreciate the work around partnerships from steward. You know, ship, but um you know, ha- ha- Saudi High School is a. A high-functioning organization, lots of moving parts. Uh they move very quickly. They get a lot done. And they provide a good experience for the kids and um there's good, there's good vibes here. You know, and it feels good when you walk through the halls of Saudi High School, and uh it's noticeable. And uh so. But if you have any questions or you think of any questions after this, you can email me and I can get some answers on that.
Okay, so let's open that up to the board. Any questions for the superintendent on any of the three reports listed?
Had a question, but I will make you some questions. Um the supervision and evaluation update. Um thinking back to the work we did over the last two years, uh I am looking at Mr. Chamberlain, because I've heard more about it from him initially than. Others, but uh how are you feeling about where we are now versus two or three years ago?
Really, really strong. We've we've fully integrated the summative evaluation for. Uh continuing contract decisions as well as every thirty years for their re-credentialing. So when we are moving towards a a a different vendor, which um really is more efficient. Um for everyone, and so I think we're in a really good path. Mike, as principal and superintendent, has really clearly articulated, this is the thing. And so um this summer, we'll be looking at um Bob and Mike will be taking on and looking at. The forums and and our reflection process. Our reflection process, we've asked them to do it a couple of different times, is a little cumbersome. So we're trying to make that more efficient. But uh from where we were three or four years ago to now. We really do meaningfully reflect on each person's performance when the biggest decisions in regularly on the credentialing, um so we think we're in a good place.
And if you, you know, I know it's just part of the principal report, but. And I can tell you as a a high school principal for over twelve years, um the first thing to go is to slip. Is the fidelity of the supervision evaluation, you know, it it might get done in places. But not in the manner that we really value that improves practice, that establishes really good relationships between teachers and administrators. And uh we, we talk about this like it being the thing, it's the thing. And uh we're really pleased that we have the system in place and the resources to complete it, right? And um I can tell you uh generally speaking, you know, it's well received by the staff. And the partnerships between the, you know, domain leaders and the deans and the principal and the staff is is strong, which allows you to have meaningful conversations. You know, during this process, so I'm 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 very at peace with it.
John?
Yeah, um I'm the bullet about Matt, the second bullet. In the bristle for. The like the sentence towards the middle says, the department will also implement the star map screener, provide more timely data. And dot dot dot. Uh the question is, and would the star, as was previously communicated, is going to be replacing Newa, is your vision?
Yes, you're right, okay.
And so is the star math screener, screener imply a pilot test? Is this a testing phase before we like actually make this decision? Or is this, what is the screener versus?
So.
Where are we in that?
So basically, what star has the ability or how we're going to utilize star is. Um two to three times a year, it's a shorter uh more efficient assessment. That you you can use uh at the beginning of the year, so hence screener, you know, to get a a base and then use it throughout the year to test. And and assess where kids at. You know, we think it's it's more efficient. Um as in the superintendent's or updates, you know, lasts more time for. Uh instruction. Uh it has tools that you can use within the your class, unlike Newa. That allows us to monitor kids through and uh and then the reports are very consumable and user-friendly. And uh so I think you're going to see it being used more often and utilized throughout the year, not just. A fall or spring Newa exam, but this could be used, you know, at least two or three times throughout the year to to see how kids are performing. And so.
But I may just sort of engage. And so the the results are kind of immediate. To the and then to the to the teacher, you don't have to wait for some organization to process the stuff and send you back their interpretation.
Yeah.
Bang. Oh, that's that's pretty cool. And then the corollary question, so we have this long history, I mean, ten plus years, fifteen maybe of Newa. Data, like longitudinal data tracking students, you know, the growth and all that stuff, so is there? Is that you can, is that will still be useful, which is historical reference? Is there connection points between what Newa was doing and where Star is? So when we're trying to assess a student over their lifetime and follow their covert, that that's still valuable?
So yeah, we we will house the Newa data, you know, and administrators and teacher or administrators will determine how teachers interact with the Newa data. And the school counselors. Um and uh star uh is a different platform. Um. And uh so this will be kind of like a a time where we switch, you know, it's like Newa and then. Star, but we'll have that data housed that we can use it. And uh, you know, we remember we talk about data here for us. There's data used for internal reasons and and as the pro- you know, progress monitor and. And look for growth. Their data we use to determine effectiveness of the school. You know, and and Newa and Star are from growth and effectiveness, you can see things like PSATs, SATs, AP sports, things like that. So that's kind of it.
We have connected star to Newa, so we can actually see the translation.
Yes.
Uh Liz Cannon has the um the the research and the map data. Exactly. So um she's uh she has that, it's it's a resource um that can be used to map this. That does exist.
If it's written, John, hold on one second, man. Uh Steve and John, you guys have any questions regarding any of the reports? Oh, did I call you John again? John, you're in my, you're stuck in there. Sorry, James. It's like the third time I've done that tonight. Uh okay, I just wanted to make sure. Hey, John, I'm gonna start calling you John, John Junior. Sorry, James. Go ahead.
Is that? Dr. Chamberlain, is that readily available to parents or do we need to ask, or does a parent need to ask? Um Dr. James or? The the Rosetta Stone or less?
Like when the report comes out, will it like?
How how do we, how do we see like a?
We can.
In a report.
Great years. So if yeah, if you if you if if parents want to want to put it in the context of the growth over years. We have the ability, Kelly Mooney will have the ability to generate the board, including that translation of where it is, what teachers, parents can see it on a continuum.
I think it's just gonna last him for a period of time.
I agree, and um and that's like. That was exactly what we said, while we're in this transition period, parents who want to seek growth over time, making that happen, putting a report for parents, that's exactly the thing. Liz and Mike went to the middle of discussions happened in Heather too. So yes, it's absolutely available to make that translation so they can see it over time. Thank you.
That's good. John, you have one more, two more, two more, other for connected. Uh is this being implemented as to SAU? Yeah.
Correct.
Full-scale replacement, already transitioned. So transition period, will there be both happening at the same time to overlap? Or just, we're sort of done with Newa now?
On the star come fall.
Okay, got it. And then the last question is, is, you know, Newa was like one one grade at the high school level, is this? At the star, because it's more, let's say, you're one of your favorite words, nimble and quick and a little easier to implement, would it be is the video? To use it for more grades?
Yeah, absolutely, and I I could see it being uh used, obviously, very much will be in ninth grade. But it's going to be used in tenth grade as well, and uh you know, potentially in other, another pockets, not so much by grade, but like. Where we feel like we need.
Yeah.
To and uh but you'll you'll see it implemented at the ninth and tenth grade level. It's really a tool for teachers, it the the whereas Newa was was not utilized as well for teachers, star will be utilized by teachers.
Okay. If we're also, I only one one quick question for you guys. On the the facilities report, are there any rocks? Big rocks? We need to be aware of, yeah, like things we need to be concerned about, put on our radar now as part of that. Yeah.
I don't think anything that hasn't been already presented to our own process, and we've talked about the bleachers.
Yeah.
At um um Caffetti, we've talked about, we're making some progress on the uh opening of the walls, you know, those are long-term.
Yeah.
Big events. Um we've got the food service going into the CIP over time. We think that's going to be good for planning. Um you know, we did, I think we talked about, we did have the screen in the theater that we're working with, that was an animal, that was a.
Yeah.
A I don't know if accident or just break.
Yeah.
So that's not insignificant, that's, I think, five figures.
Uh yeah, yeah.
So those, um so those are the things that we're working through, but long-term, it's. Um but you know, what's, yeah, I've been hyping on, uh it's just the the open walls replacing, you know, over time.
Yeah.
Your long time, and that's not insignificant, so I think. A turf were in great shape. Um it's lasting longer than we thought and they're saving extraordinarily well, and that's very well documented. So the turf is an extraordinary, it's a wonderful example of high-quality planning, better displayed. Um so that's very strong, and hopefully we can move into, you know, bleachers, fully accessible bleachers and accessible in other ways. But I think, you know, this summer, we're doing the fire line, which is significant. We've done some work, so I think I think we're in pretty good shape. I think you've seen through all the presentations of all the stuff we know about in our planning.
Yeah. Okay, they'll be busy here, uh as we work with Roger and Dana to plan the summer.
Yeah.
In this building, so.
There's projects, just add to that. Um Jim, I think. This discussion of adding in food service and athletics and really all of their durables and goods into the CIP is part of this process. That we aren't surprised, you know, whether it's the fencing or the scoreboards or dishwasher. You pick you pick something that's supposed to last a long time, that it'll be packed in there in a line item, and we have three professionals watching it. They'll let us know when it's, it goes from green to yellow and we.
Okay.
Goes to be prepared for red, basically.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, thank you. And thanks, everybody. All right, so if there's no more questions with regards to the reports received. We're gonna move to section eight on end of the year financial projections. Um Amy, are you gonna provide um?
Yeah.
An overview?
Yeah, and I. Apologize for the late ad of the spreadsheet. It's um this is a tough time of year to do projections, and you guys are the first. Board meeting of the month, so it's still early. Um but I was working on it, you know, up until the last minute to try to get the most accurate. Projections possible. Um in doing that work, the good news is I'm projecting to be able to fund all of the warrant articles. Um that were passed by the voters. Um we are, I am projecting today. Uh conservatively that we are not able to fully meet the tax effort offset amount that was estimated. Uh however, I'm hopeful that that will will change. Uh right now, we have a shortfall of. A hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred dollars. That's being projected. Because of that, uh I did include the unsent fund balance project list, but. Uh administration is not recommending that uh we fund any end-of-year projects this year. Uh because we are not able to fully project meeting the tax effort offset for FY twenty-six. Um so there are some board notes in your packet. Um I I wish I had been. A little vaguer in my public hearing notice and had um nothing so so specific for the maintenance. Fund, because I would recommend that um because we're at this point not able to meet. The um tax effort uh offset that we that the board consider. Uh potentially using funds from the uh special education expendable trust fund. In the event, once all of uh the transactions are finalized and recorded. Um we we don't, we're not able to to make that effort and could potentially. Um be reimbursed from the trust fund for an unanticipated cost that occurred this year. Uh for two hundred thousand dollars that the board has discussed in uh previous meetings. So. The uh request is to have that conversation tonight uh with the board, and if. That is what the board would like to do, to uh come up with a date for a quick public hearing. Um that would need to happen prior to the end of this fiscal year, so based on the timing for a public hearing notice. We would need to have that public hearing between June twenty-third and June thirtieth. Uh what will happen is the books will close. We uh will um. Still have some transactions that happen in July. Uh I'm hoping that the Medicaid revenue that has not been fully realized will come in during that timeframe, and we would be able. To use those as FY. To use those as FY twenty-five revenue because it's for students and. Um, that, that it's for claims that happened in FY twenty-five, so I can keep the books open for a while to capture that revenue. Uh, also in July, we still are paying out invoices, so we just can't fully have a absolute picture of. The unsent fund balance until we get through. Um, all of both the revenue collection as well as. I think we're gonna be really close, I think we're gonna probably make it and not need to take. The special education funds uh. From the expendable trust fund, but. I would like. If, if the board is willing to have the ability to um, to have had the public hearing, have the approval and be able to. Transfer those funds into that account. Out of the general. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so there's, there's two questions before the board. What I heard is, the first question is, is this something we want to do? The second question is, if it is something we want to do, we're gonna have to schedule. Uh, another meeting between the twenty-third and the thirtieth, or at least four of us need to show up.
Yeah.
So the first question is before the board. Discussion? Yes. Go ahead, Stephen.
Um, sorry, Steve, sorry. When I take a look and follow your math here, so.
Yeah.
The estimated tax effort of three hundred and sixty-five. Everybody go ahead and pull two hundred out of the. Um. Uh, the, the, the special reserve account.
Yeah.
We're just basically. Bumping that number up or trying to come close to three sixty-five.
Yeah.
And so my concern is, is that. The account is designed for unexpected expenses, which clearly we had. Um, so we, we checked that box.
Yeah.
But in a sense, we're just pulling money out of that just to return back to the tax base. And I don't know if the taxpayer would want that, right? Because reserve is, oh my God, we've got a gap this year, we can't lay people off. Um. We have this spending expense coming down from a special ed standpoint, thank God we have this reserve that we won't now have to take drastic action. And so I don't know if taking the three sixty-five down a hundred and seventy-two thousand, just returning less, uh, is that much of a deal? That would warrant me um withdrawing or voting to withdraw um from, from the special ed account.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, um, the only, yeah, absolutely, the one thing I would add is the special education. Trust fund has done very well with investments and it's. Uh, I think it's, it's around four hundred and seventy thousand or so, so it's pretty, it's the largest reserve account that. So. So that would be, that's just one consideration.
What, what is the highest tuition? That we would pay outside? I mean, I've seen some pretty high ones. I think, yeah. We feel good about having two hundred to three hundred.
Yeah.
Um, well, Heather sleeps well, it's over four hundred, but um, I think, you know, we've got other districts that are not even a hundred yet. Even so, we're, we're building, but this place is the strongest in the SAU.
Yeah.
It really is about. The commitment to the tax.
Well.
Um, and it's really is, this is, this is, you know, we talked about, this is the board's decision.
Yep.
Where I came from, that estimate was strong. And you know, there's um other means of which districts can. Um, save money for tax rate, right? Um, you can have, but the, none of the districts and, and the SAU. For avail themselves of other legislation that allows you to put reserve funds, but. It is totally up to you, we like wanna be, right, we, when we estimate something to the town, we want to fulfill that. Uh, or have a compelling reason not to, and the board makes the decision, so that's, that's the balance, we wouldn't, if, if we were at two twenty. We probably wouldn't recommend taking two hundred out because we wouldn't have the reserves, so we like Heather sleeping well. But in this case, it is, um, it is, it is reasonable to do that, but to your point. A couple of years, we may be asking for the money back, but right now we're okay. So it really is your appetite for fulfilling your. Commitment of what we estimated for the tax rate and reserves.
Chris.
To the point of that. That calls to me for a good reason to have a public hearing. So that whichever vote we, we went with could say, we, we gave opportunity for the taxpayer to say. We would rather have the tax rate be closer to the estimate, or we would rather have you leave the trust fund alone. But, I mean. Because just like the public hearing we had tonight, I'm sorry, this is a more of one comment, but uh, just like the hearing we had tonight, if Will or Jeanie had given us compelling reason not to do. What we want to do, then we would just vote differently, we're not bound because we have a public hearing. That's my only thought about that.
Anyone else? Um, John. Yeah, so just. I think I understand, so. Yeah, we're. Our budget, our, our um capital reserve funds. Have been funded, and that's eating in a hundred and seventy-two thousand at the estimated at this point into our. Um. Estimated tax uh get back.
Yeah.
Okay. So. You know, I'm kind of in alignment with, with uh Stephen's thinking on that, um. So it's like. Kind of a. Shell game for, I'm not really sure. For what purpose exactly, um, however. Um, two things to, to remember with special education funding, the four hundred thousand. Is um. It's quite a bit, if it's like two, two hundred is an upper range of uh placement. Because. It's, it's a one-time. Thing, right? Because all of that funds goes into your default budget the next year. It's not a recurring cost, the special education cost, even though they may be high. Am I correct about that? So if we had a new, a new, a new, a new student with needs coming in, that costs. A do, a, a dollar amount, fifty thousand, just throwing up right there. Um, and we weren't anticipating that. We'd have to fund it somehow, that would be why our capital reserve fund exists, we could pull fifty thousand out of that or a hundred or whatever it is, and then pay that fee for the remainder of that year. But then the next budget cycle, that student's need would be part of our special education. Budget, which would be in our default budget calculation.
For next year.
For the fall.
Okay. So we'd be putting.
So that, if, if it's fifty thousand, it wouldn't be fifty thousand if you wanted to do it here and then to tell the.
For twenty-seven.
Yes, this is sort of the.
Six is done.
The scenario.
Yep.
You know.
Yep.
Right, so that gives us a little. Time to, now it could be, in student, move in and we're. It's really difficult, so.
It's always possible.
We're inclined to leave it alone.
No, no wrong answer.
Sorry, on the, on, well, just on, just as, yeah, I think, you know, which, I think the, the taxpayers who voted for all the capital reserve funds and. We show them how this is all playing out. I don't know that anyone, they might be. Rumbling a little bit, but I don't think they'd be angry per se, um, that our estimate was off. Um, on the tax rate, because we're estimating something that's nine, ten months before it actually happens anyway. It's not unusual for our estimates to, to change. We didn't expect this to happen, and it happens, but we re-realized savings over here because we thought something might happen, and it didn't happen, I mean, this is just. Day-to-day dynamics, not year-over-year.
Last year, we give back more than what we estimated, so.
There we go.
It's, it's a difficult thing to. To project.
Did you get thank you letters for that?
I did not.
James, James. I understand this balance sheet is basically, we're. We're spending roughly fifty percent out of the. Out of the pond now. Could then ask taxpayer. Come March. To refill it?
Yeah, you may or may not, because it's, it's pretty high, it's. Close to four hundred and seventy thousand, so it would be the, the board's decision whether or not to, to refill it, so.
If that amount around four hundred, if they. It's helping, we want it back there, I mean, I. Would want to take on backup, so. Let's put back the taxpayer. On the warrants. The, the other question I had is, is, does something like this get reviewed or washed through the budget or finance committee? At this moment. Like if we decide to take this up. Would it go to them, say, yes, this is. An additional body looking at this and says, we recommend. X, Y, Z, back the board within these. Twenty-five days to. Then for us, take action, it's tight time, I understand, but. Wouldn't that be? The normal course of order or? Even if we had more time?
Not typical. That, that, that's why there's a public hearing.
Okay.
So.
Just come express it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Maybe more, John, question, I made, um. You know how much of the four hundred and X dollars is? Uh, principal versus how much has the taxpayer contributed to it and versus how much is growth?
Small body markets?
For the principal beginning for balance for this year, because it's, it's really old, it's formed in like two thousand and one. Um, it's two hundred and sixty thousand. Income, income beginning balance is one forty. The total principal and income is um for fair market value is four sixty-seven. Or almost four sixteen.
So we could potentially like split it, not take the tax donation. To call it that, tax contribution, but take the growth and offset, like just give that money, the one hundred and forty back. To taxpayers and say, hey, you're so. Here's, you're softening the blow a little bit, could be a hybrid solution that.
If you need it, and you might not even need it.
If we need.
By the time we get to the end. If, if we get the Medicare money and if we get other things, you know, spread away, you might not even need it at all, this is just. If you wanted to be able to fully meet the tax off, rate up, offset, I wanted to give you that opportunity. So that's all that this is.
Stephen.
Yeah, so a, a, a couple of things and, and thoughts, so I think this body is extraordinarily transparent when it comes to. The special warrant articles that we've put on the ballot for the last couple of years. And we've always explained the packing order, the order of the warrant is the order that they get filled, there's not enough funding, the one at the bottom doesn't receive funding. And so when we take a look at that order, the opportunity to the taxpayer when they're voting for that is. There may not be anything left to actually fill those buckets, so that's, that's, that's number one, I, I do believe we've been very transparent about that. Number two, when I just do fuzzy math on the back of an envelope nap, napkin, um, we're talking about for a community of Mount Vernon, twenty-five thousand dollars. That's it. Right? That's the difference. Um, and for us to tap into, going into the geopolitical environment in the education space over the course of next year. I have no idea how reimbursements are going to impact this district, and I can't cite enough the example of our library. We thought we were good. And it turns out we got royally hosed. Seven hundred thousand dollars just completely given to us and then taken away. I have no idea if that's gonna happen to this district, so if there's a timeframe where we need capacity. It's this upcoming year and probably the year after, so I really don't support pulling money out of the special ed budget. I'm sorry, special ed.
Okay, um, do we have? Why don't we go this way, do we have a motion to support administration's recommendation as presented, or do we have an alternative motion? Where, where are we lying, where are we standing right now?
And just be, be, there's no wrong answer.
Yeah.
It's just, it's, it's us giving you the opportunity to have the conversation and.
Yeah.
Uh, make that decision, I just, just didn't, I would not want to give you that opportunity, that's all, so that's really it. So no, we're. I know it says recommendation, but we really are finding a way.
I know, but this is like, let's, let's formally get it on the table, let's make a, let's make a decision so we can move the room, feel good about it.
But if we do nothing at all, what happens?
We're, we're good, so we won't have a public hearing, we'll, um, we don't need to make a motion to do nothing.
You don't have to, no.
No.
You don't have to, I'm just saying, if you want to do something different.
I, I think we.
I'm glad James had here. No, no, I just want to point a clarification, there's no risk at this point. Russ going, that, correct?
No.
Oh, no, no, all it would be, would just be less money back. This is all. Additional revenue and, and expenditure savings. So, and we're, we, we, we are projecting enough funds to fund all the warrant articles, this is just that.
Okay.
Amount of offset next year, and. I'm hopeful that we'll meet that as well.
Um, I'm gonna go to James, and then Steve wants to make a comment in response, go ahead, touch James.
Oh. I'm seeing this as administration coming to the board for. Action. Whether we take up the action or not to move forward, I think especially for transparency, I'd say we. We have a vote on. Does, like you. Um. Also, I would be open to not reducing roughly half. Of the possible, just the, the fifty percent. Or send this person, um, so. You know, though, if the. If the board would want to take up, you know. Say a hundred. A little bit more comfortable with that, rather than, especially if the, the feeling is that we're going to. Not have to tap into the funds, but.
Yeah.
Just, I just, I just think. Total on Stelbro. Or nine.
Okay. Steve.
So the, the, the only, the risk is that you turn. Um, back fund balance that was below your estimate during the budget process, that's, that's the risk. Um, and the goal of this was that if you want, if, if that was of value. We wanted to prepare the opportunity to have a public hearing to be able to do it, that was it. So it wasn't, so if, if that tax. Estimate during the budget process was of value, the, the way that we wanted more time and more flexibility to meet that. By scheduling a public hearing in a couple of weeks into the posting, that was it. But we truly, all three of us, we talked about this. We absolutely respect and appreciate this conversation very much, and that helps us too, and it is. As I've talked about in my past life. It was, it's a different, it was one district, one tax bill, one piece. So the community that I came from was much more interested in the tax impact and the expense. Steve, tell me the impact of our taxes, and if you tell me the tax rate's gonna be less, not more than thirty-two cents. It better be not more than thirty-two cents, because it was crystal clear. It wasn't mixed with Mount Vernon, it wasn't part of the Amherst, it was one number. And that was the number that the budget, and that was the number that had Mike as, as their superintendent, that was the credibility for me. And I said this, and I got videoed at one of the other districts, that number was so strong and the credibility connected to it on that community. That we would absolutely stop spending to make sure we had enough fund balance, we would freeze the budget. Because that number was credibility with the community and the budget committee, that was a municipal budget committee that I had to go in front of and tell them, your tax bill will not go up. Any more than this. And every year I was superintendent, it never went up more than that, ever. So much so that. I was worried about it, I've been taking reserves, but we also had a one point two million dollars in reserves for tax rate out of the additional fund, so it's just difference, that's all. So the only counterpoint I would offer to that is, is the, the tax rate is so messy in terms of how it's formulated anyway, and the board of selectmen year after year. Go in and I'll be blunt, manipulate the tax rate.
They do.
Because they're either buying back the tax rate with some reserve, uh, in the, in the reserve that's mandated by the state, or they're not.
Yes.
And so for us to go in and say, um. Hey. We're, we're gonna stick to this exact penny, we have no control over that at all, because it's all dictated by, by people that just have to sit in a town hall. So. If I may, and, in my world, there was two tax. On that bill. That I, I usually would absolutely, when, when the select board bought back and they used their overlay or they used their savings. And it looked like their tax rate wasn't up, but their expenses were going bananas, I was very frustrated, but on the Hockington tax bill. It wasn't the selectman, it was school tax. And municipal, and the school tax rate couldn't go up more than I said. If it did, they were cranky pants, and we never had. It never happened in all my time as superintendent, we froze the budget. Not saying that was wonderful. And there was years where I superintendent approved every PO in January on. Imagine that? So I love this conversation, and I, and I knew variable, Stephen, to your point. There was more instability about support now than ever in my career, so I, your, your piece about it's the best time to have reserves. Resonates with me very much, and that was, that was a piece that I did not think of, I appreciate that, so I appreciate learning, I, I, that was, that was compelling to. Because you are correct. What you're saying is absolutely, we have more uncertainty about reimbursements in IDEA or others than ever in my career. So this is a good time to keep the reserve as much as you can sell. Because of the variables that are different than ever before in my entire career. Because of the variables that are different than ever before in my entire career. So I appreciate that perspective right here.
Christie.
Have you calculated? What the impact would be of this two? I mean, is it already in the notes? I missed it.
No, it's not.
I did it last. Last times.
It's a pennies.
Not a lot, a lot.
It's not.
Is it a whole penny?
And and so let me just.
Have you talked about a whole penny?
Saying transparency, how much effort goes into hosting a public hearing? From your office?
I mean, I'll have I I I have a notice and then it has to get posted in the paper, put around town and then. Yeah, we'll have to have a meeting.
So going to Christie's comment before Mr. Manning, it may be a good idea to host a public hearing just to solicit feedback anyway. I don't know if my view is gonna change, um but um just giving the public an opportunity to at least weigh in and. If we get people show up, great. If not, it's gonna be no surprise cuz it's summertime and schools out and it'll probably be in the morning.
Yeah, I suspect you're right and I I fall close to your side. I just I like the idea of being able to say if people have anything to say about later. Look, we gave the opportunity. We wanted to hear from you. We didn't hear from you, so we represented you.
Yeah, so I'm gonna I'm gonna end the conversation here. It pleases the board. Um that's where my mind is. That we we really have to have a public hearing on this, but I think the discussion was important just because. There is a complexity and the next year we are gonna be faced with some unprecedented surprises. Given legislative changes we're we're seeing Concord and elsewhere. So. The next question to the board then is like, what date?
Yes.
When do we do it? So it's the twenty third to the thirtieth. Is there a date that works for at least four of us?
We can do anytime. I'm very flexible. So I'll say I can pretty much come anytime. So the early morning or.
Twenty three to twenty six. Twenty three to thirtieth.
Yeah.
Oh, a week. Yeah, um.
The yeah, the twenty third is a Monday, the thirtieth is.
Uh twenty fourth, I am out. Otherwise, open.
No.
What's that?
In person required.
In person, yeah, at least four in person. And we can do it at the brick. Uh I'm wide open on that Friday, the twenty seventh. Um.
Twenty seventh is the least optimal day for me, but I will make it work if that's what we got.
You probably don't wanna wait.
We can do a morning. It doesn't matter.
You probably don't wanna wait till the thirtieth.
I don't care. It's fine.
Was it easier for a doodle then? I don't know if that's easier.
Well.
For you guys. We have two missing numbers and then their schedules may compel a date that is for of us at least.
I need to get the newspaper article.
Uh I can do the twenty sixth if it's probably more like in the afternoonish.
Like a five o'clock?
Yeah.
So too much in your guys.
No, it's fine. No, it's on me. I'm doing it. They won't be here.
So if. Uh we can buzz in. My my can have a soup conference, but we can sort of zoom in if any aside, but.
Yeah.
Amy will be.
Yeah, I can. I can have.
Twenty six.
How does that work? It works.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Christie.
Yeah, it's great.
Let's let's set up with twenty fifth.
Twenty.
Twenty six Thursday.
Oh, so I'm sorry, the twenty sixth, Thursday, twenty sixth. I apologize. Yeah.
At what time?
Five o'clock, five o'clock work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Let me just get that. Did you get that?
Yeah.
And maybe by then, well, I'll I I will. I'll have a clearer picture, so.
Uh where are you thinking? Um you thinking the brick school? Are you thinking here?
You do the brick school. That's okay.
The brick school.
Brick school.
Be great.
All right, let's let's.
Thank you.
And the the idea would be to get the public notice out as soon as practical.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow so that to Christie's point, if people are paying attention, then they wanna weigh in, they have maximum opportunity to do so. Okay. Perfect, um. I'm sure I get that. And. Books, okay. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
That was a little around the bend, but I think it was important.
Yeah.
All right, just as an update, um. We've got a little bit to get through on this agenda. Stephanie is en route from Concord. She's about twenty five minutes away. I know we have people in the audience, though, that really would love to hear Constitutional Interpretation Committee without being here till nine o'clock at night. Um. With it, please of the board, can I just bounce around a little bit to clear some wood um on the agenda? The first is. Board Correspondence, Section Nine. We don't have any board correspondence, correct?
We don't, um but in in board notes, we did meet with the the executive director of the School Board Association after the conversation at the S A U meeting. Um and. You know, as as we learned, or as we anticipated and expected and interpreted, you know, uh. When community members email individual board members or collective. Board collectively is considered a pub, the governmental record in a public. But that is a practice that has not been implemented in S U thirty nine or South Heagan School District. So before we. Move forward with that practice. If we choose to, we don't have to have a decision tonight. We can have further conversation. We would want to notify community members, families. Parents that as when you email a board member, it is subject to right to know and is considered a governmental record. Because sometimes we get forward emails that people don't know that that is the case. And uh so I just wanted people to, we looked into that. We don't have to do anything with the conversation tonight. We're still gonna formulate our recommendation to you guys later, but it was in response to the conversation that we had the other night. I just want, that's the only thing we have on.
So just real fast, um I noticed on the emails, there's an auto script. Now, uh is that default for everybody in the entire district? Or is this something we need to add to our signature?
It should be it. The way it works is when you send an email, they see it. And when you receive an email from someone in S U thirty nine, you see it.
Okay.
So you won't see it necessarily on the bottom of your signature.
If I needed to add that to mine.
No, but it's there.
And then number two, on the website where all of our email addresses are, we put a bullet point right above it, warning. All emails sent to this address are subject to public disclosure.
Yeah, that's not, that's what we're gonna have, you know, maybe like and uh plus put a communication out so people are aware. Yeah, and we're we plan on doing that over summer work as as we start the, you know, school year next year.
Right, right. Are we good? Good? All right, now I just wanna jump to Section eleven Personnel. Do we have anything in personnel to discuss?
Yes, um we have two things in personnel. We're gonna get an update on health benefits. And 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 for Amy and Steve, but there is a nomination uh sheet in there, um. It's a Spanish teacher, uh James Silvera. Um Steve and I sat down with him after he went through the process. Uh we think he's gonna be a wonderful addition to Sohegan High School. Um but you notice in there it says pending the achievement of a necessary credential. He is a good teacher. He does have the ability taught in Texas. At an elementary uh in in middle school level, he's taught high school over in Spanish for the last the three years. Your one year, multiple years. He's been multiple years if I remember correctly. Um and uh we'd like to. You know, get a nomination. To uh to approve, or excuse me, we'd like to get a motion to approve his nomination pending if the achievement of the necessary credential.
Second, second. Discussion.
Sounds great.
Sounds great. All right, all in favor? Thank you.
Opposed.
Five oh. Great, thank you. Um I'll turn it over to Steve and Amy.
Oh, yeah.
Update on the where we with some uh child changes to the health benefits.
Yeah, just a a a a notice to follow up, um. Um as as the board may or may not know, the S A U staff is linked to the South Heagan as far as benefits. So what we talked about. Uh and was approved for the S A U staff regarding changing the uh. The changing the premium, the same amount as the deductible change. We're just looking to translate that to all the South Heagan. Playable, non P P C members that are accessing that uh health insurance um plan. So it'd be identical to what we talked about with the S A U employers, employers. It's just a very slight change. The delta from the decrease in the de- and the deductible goes to the increase, the same value of the employer share of the. Um just we want, we did it. We'll do it at all districts. All districts have just about the same piece. So it is, it is practically.
Same as S A U.
For all practical purposes, it is budget.
Okay.
It makes complete sense.
And.
Alright, questions?
Uh non P P C staff, so we're talking about administrators, we're talking about uh. Cafeteria folks, people of uh sanitation engineers.
Spect- uh if you remember the Spectaculous, the people in the gray area were working on as well.
And so some.
Every employee that's not covered by P P C.
Some of those.
Staff is actually in.
They're in P P C, okay. They are, right. Yes, of course they are. Uh. Okay, and. I the. I know there was like this uh grandfather thing for collective bargaining agreements. Our agreement is not traditional. Has it been recognized by Health Trust that their P P C process is equivalent? To a collective bargaining agreement for this purpose.
Yes, um we were able to obtain that classification. So that will, the next time the P P C goes under negotiations, that piece will be required to be mutually negotiated through that process. So this is just for non P P C staff. The P P C is treated as all our other collective bargaining agreements in the S A U.
Thank you.
We want. We want, we want something. Uh Steve, just real fast, Mike, um are we looking at alternatives? Because it's looking more and more likely. There's gonna be significant stress in the old area up in Concord, um. Like if we get uh like the town of Amherst did, hey, we're out. Like, do we have Plan B?
We are aware of Plan of potential options, but we don't have, we haven't moved forward with it is. When we're not sure based on our increases in Amy and Steve, you can weigh in this, that someone would take us on. You know, uh would as we ever we look to change and me has done some work around this. And it's reached out to, you know, school care and and others and that's what we're feeling. So we're exploring other options. We're just not sure that the other options are gonna be better than than Health Trust.
Okay.
An additional complication, if I may, is that sometimes managers are actually stated inside collective bargaining agreements. Not levels of plan, but vendors, and that makes it adds an additional complication.
With the multiple with the multiple C P As that we're managed. Yeah.
We understand. Well, only by support vehicles.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh yeah.
So uh just point clarification, uh Dr. Chamberlain and and Mr. Berry. You're not asking us to take any action tonight, right? This is information.
Yeah, and and right, just to um understand what we. They did it for the S A U staff.
Yes, I do.
So if you wanna approve the same thing for the the staff, we'd appreciate it. Would be like benefits to be approved.
Yeah.
Yep, so. Don't want any ambiguity in who's doing what, based on what authority.
Yeah, so we'd like it.
So we have a motion to approve. So moved. Second?
Second.
Okay. We've already had discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Five oh.
Make sure you vote yes.
You're welcome. Very welcome. Anything else under personnel? No, okay. Stephanie's on her way. We're getting to the constitutional discussion quickly. I I just wanna knock off committee updates um to give Stephanie just a couple more minutes. What I'm asking for is a lot of bullets here, a lot of committees. Alums, let's go around the room really quick. By member. If you're on a committee and have an update, provide an update. There's no updates to provide. We're moving on. Does that sound okay? Okay, James, any updates to provide?
Uh yes, buildings and grounds done to. Well. I need to present the two people for. The new buildings and grounds. I don't know for you to make a motion and vote on it.
Yeah, we do.
We do.
Yeah.
Can we do that after you give your all the other updates and then let's skip right into that one? Can you?
We can. Yes.
Uh perfect.
No other updates. At the moment. Jared.
Okay, thank you, James. Steve.
Uh just uh two uh very quick hits for the town of London, um. Our robotics team actually won best float in our parade this year. So so we in high school represented for the first time and had something actually in the spring gala parade and they won the whole thing, so. Uh we're pretty proud about that. It's uh that's actually good. Um and in terms of our monthly uh report, sent number two out. Um with some nice feedback coming from somebody who's been reading about it in another town newsletter. So uh, well, that's it.
Great, thanks, Steve. Christie.
Uh so brick improvement, uh we all just heard last week and it hasn't changed. So unless you have any burning questions. And then uh P T S A, I haven't heard anything yet, so.
Okay. Fantastic, thank you. John. A lot of policy committee meeting is tomorrow. Next question, so always some more output. Later this month. Okay, thank you, John. Uh as far as my committee assignments, um P P C is probably the biggest one. Don't really have any updates yet. Plus Stephanie's been taking. My role in the last few meetings that I haven't been able to be there. Um does anybody from administration wanna provide any updates on that or are we good?
On P P C, yeah, we can. Um. We're just gonna do it in the superintendent report, but I'll do it here.
Okay.
Um so we met with uh. We this group of people that exist at at South Heagan based on their roles. Um they're in in two thousand five, they were dubbed the Spectaculous. You know, so they, you know, they. They weren't P P C and they weren't administrators. They were positions, campus coordinator, data analyst and budget. Uh Browns. Um I T, those type of positions.
Like a Marvel movie.
Yeah, and uh so um so. What we did is we updated them that we were going to uh. Um treat them as non P P C members. Cuz at times they were treated as P P C members based on their contractors and and the way we interacted with them. However, we met with them to clearly delineate that they were were going to be considered non P P C members moving forward. And uh we think that is a good thing for them in those positions as we uh en- employ them within the South Heagan. District. And you, Steve, wanna add anything to that?
You know, this work really will come to the board in September pre-budget. That allow some additional flexibility, but the the faculty and staff. Were really yearning for clarity. This purgatory, this not in one, not the other, um was frustrating at times. They wanted to be with with non P P C and at times they wanted to be with P P C and it was difficult for them. So we had a. Um a really good meeting, uh H R, Amina is integral involved in this and. Um they'll all, um you know, read budget, you will see, but this will come to the board. Um it is a classification. September.
And it helps the business office also because it was always confusing sometimes on how to treat their benefits. Um that's in their wages as opposed to not, or as opposed to the administration. Who were clearly not. And those things. So it will just break clarity for all of us to work, appreciate them.
All right, terrific. Any any other questions?
Those staff happy with this uh so this is this is what they wanted or?
Yeah, they're they, I think, no, I think they were just wanting clarity on where they were.
Either one way or the other.
They they just wanted clarity on where they fell. So. Um we just wanted to. Provide that clarity for them and make it really clean. Uh so.
I'm good. Okay. All right, great. There's no more updates or comments. Um I'd like to thank everybody for their updates on the the committee updates. I'm gonna bounce back up to.
Building grounds.
Oh, sorry, right. James, apologies to you, sir.
Um. The new committee builds grounds for South Heagan has two representatives. One from Amherst. I've all made up and. Uh these are the two presenting for. Taking clear for board and for their nominations. These are the only two. And in motion. Uh or any of the discussion before we move into. Taking up this.
Uh well, the first is I'll ask, is there a motion to accept these nominations?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I have my hope is we can break this up into two. Um okay, and 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 the question I had before a second's raised is. I don't know if the communication was received because we were sending a lot of communications out from the district at that time. So I think this may have been lost. Is there an opportunity for us to go ahead and repurpose or re-advertise to see? Cuz I knew it was pretty light across all districts, correct? Well, actually, Mount Vernon, you had a lot.
We had, so we can, to your point, yes, you guys charged us to reopen this.
Yeah.
And and we can do that, absolutely. That's, you know, um and we did throw out a number of communications around those and grounds. We had a vacant seat in Mount Vernon. Uh we got a vacant uh good interest in the vacancy.
Okay.
In Mount Vernon, not so much good interest in in the in the building ground in Mount Vernon.
Yeah.
Uh and uh and Amherst, uh a little more interest of 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 people uh for the building and grounds. Um than than South Heagan, but they also were soliciting. Or they have more members, so I I don't think it was clear like it was only one seat that was open. So I think people thought the committee was bigger, so they would have big, more community members, but really they were only had one seat and and so uh they got five or six. Uh applicants um for that one seat. We got two here in South Heagan. So um to your point, I do think there was a number of communications soliciting volunteers from community council. Members to building and grounds to this, so it would be worth considering. If you wanted to, but right now you have two names in front of you.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah, and we have a motion. That hasn't been seconded.
Hasn't been seconded. Nope, has not been seconded.
If, if I'm major. Have, as a committee, did you guys talk about sort of the advertising thing? If we do reopen it for, for, uh, advertising, is that going to set you guys back? Um, like, what are the consequences of doing that or is this still something that we're going to be able to do?
At that point, we've, if we open it up, absolutely, um. We can have more people involved. If we have two people, I would think we would move forward with these two so the committee can actually start to do work. And we're not being put back in time until fall. Um, especially with some of the stuff that needs to happen, um. With, uh, the science rooms. So with that timeframe. Uh, for us to, to move forward with this. And and then engage the community, we need to additionally summer and then again on fall with communications for the district.
We'll have a second. What's the recommendation then, James? Steve, I'm sorry, Steve.
Um, one of the advantages of having a, a public hearing on. That date you just picked. It is an opportunity to do this then without going all the way to July. You're having a meeting, you could, if you want, only if you wanted to open it, it's only, it wouldn't extend beyond today's, whatever, I'm just throwing it out. You know what I'm saying? And that doesn't make sense.
I'm open to, um.
Yeah.
Behold. Nominations, um, until our public hearing. Okay, this month, on point six.
Uh, Mr. Glover, would you be willing to withdraw your motion?
No. No, because I don't understand what we're doing here.
Okay.
I, 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 we did a call to community members to serve. Community council. Building and grounds. Other places, other places, this is the time, this happens. And if people want to serve, they can survey the landscape and pick and choose what they want to do. We're lucky to have people put their names in to fill the spots that we have. And to not honor our commitment to those people is baffling to me. We said, put it in here, no, we didn't commit to deciding this matter, but these committees need to do their work. So. We, we've. These people who did this followed the process and we should be grateful and we should honor them by appointing them. Um, and it was unfortunate if we didn't have more interest, but at least we felt, we, we met, we met our minimum, so let's go. Uh, what, what? What? What rationale is there to, to, to not honor that? I don't, I just don't understand, uh, that at all.
Chris, my question is for Mr. Stroger.
Go ahead.
Uh. Are you, do you just have two slots or do you have more open slots available?
Not, you have one slot or.
Each thing, so you have enough people.
It's one person from Amherst. One person from Mount Vernon.
Just what it's.
So do we have a second on the motion that's on the floor?
I mean, I'll, I'll second.
Okay, so we have, we have a second from Christie. Any additional discussion? Going once? Going twice? Okay, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor of accepting those nominations from Mr. Stroger? All opposed? For one? Okay. Uh, so those nominations go forward. And that is the end of committee updates at seven thirty four, okay?
Uh, do you superintendent updates?
Um, this is what I'd like to do, if it pleases the board, um. I'd like to, John, how long is it going to take for you to do the constitational interpretation?
I mean, I don't have a lot to say about it. I mean, the process is described in writing. There's a review, I mean, maybe a queue. Couple of themes that emerged, um, if you read it in total, I can just sort of put that out there. We could discuss, uh, or not, um, but I don't have a, like a. You know.
Okay.
Five-page paper to read into the record here.
I, so let me, let me, let me explain the board right with these agenda items. So I'm going to, I'm going to tackle the constitutional interpretation committee and the board goal review and reflection. I, I believe the intent that Stephanie and I had when we met the superintendent and developed the agenda was, hey, let's do. You put a lot of work into that committee, so let's hear it, right? It's a big part of South Eagan's policies. Um, also, um, we need board goals and then we were hoping to have a discussion that would. Form what we would do later on in July during the retreat. Um, I think Stephanie's about five minutes out, so. Um. I think the, the discussion tonight is kind of get, get a flavor for what you've discovered, right? In a public setting. Get a flavor of what the board goals could potentially be, but have a more fulminant discussion. During the retreat in July. That's the intent. So before I, I move forward. Any? Thoughts about how we wanted to handle that or do, does the board want to handle it differently before I? Before I dive in and let John start talking about constitutional interpretation committee so that the public can, can hear the conversation. Are you, you okay with that, how we were thinking about it? Steve, John, uh, John? James, James, I, I am so sorry, man. You're stuck as John now.
Yeah, no. What's the name tax?
Forgot him.
That's right. I was Jamie until I was eighteen years old. With a six million dollar, no, it was bionic woman, I think, was the bionic woman that was here, which probably nobody remembers.
Jamie Summers.
Jamie Summers.
Don't worry, we've got a solution here.
Yeah.
It's, it's definitely June.
There you go.
It should, it should not be a hard name for me to grasp, you know?
Should not.
Being the great name that it is, okay. I'm trying to stall with it, yeah, why don't you go to the super, is it a long superintendent update?
No, I actually don't speak the long.
Okay.
So I'll do that superintendent update if you guys don't mind.
Walk in right now.
Perfect, so it's pretty quick, um. If you look at it, it's in board notes, I talked a little bit on you want to start, had the opportunity to update you guys on that earlier, that's the same, same update, um. Our YRBS data I shared with the chair and the co-chair, uh, that we had five hundred and twenty-nine students who took the survey and, um. And then, uh, the three oh six update, um, where we are is we'll be meeting this summer and forming a plan with principals. The three oh sixes, when they do shift, will primarily affect. South Eagan High School throughout SU thirty-nine, a little bit in the other buildings, but a primary, predominantly effect. Our, our director of curriculum accountability, Liz Cannon, has, uh, been updated throughout the year on the progress of that. Um, and as we get farther into it and decisions are made, we will go ahead and continue to update you with the retreat. We'll, like, we will be able to provide more information on this, um, that. We made it, we're scheduling some meetings and we decided that we were going to hold the September. South Eagan School District Meeting in Mount Vernon. Um, so we will be doing that, that will get on the calendar. Uh, there, there will be a location change, James and Steve, we're going to go into, back into Christina Anderson's room.
Great. Switch us up a little bit, so not necessarily September, but maybe the November, December. At that time, our library project is scheduled to be finished. We can use their meeting room, great place to showcase that.
Hmm, so yeah, we can, we can amend that.
Meeting facilities, infrastructure, so, um, to really.
So what I'll do is, uh, we'll, we'll. We'll go, you said November, December?
Uh, it's scheduled for October.
Yeah.
And as we talked about many times, a little bit of a delay, so November, December, somewhere.
Yeah, I'll put that in the notes, good to go. And then the last thing and and and, you know, it's, it's flying around the state right now and and Stephanie was there today. Cell phone, you know, bill passed that will have an impact on the opening of school. Uh, and the interesting piece that, you know, people talk about, I think the bell to bell will be interpreted depending on the local. Uh, SAU and I also want people to know that, uh, this is going to expand more than just phones. This is going to be other devices. Tablets, personal devices may be prohibited.
Yep.
At school, watches may be prohibited.
Yep.
So there's going to be some real work due around this and, uh, I will keep you updated on this. There is no answers right now, we don't have a formalized plan, we've been aware of this, monitoring this. You know, and we'll get updated later, but I just, while we're here, wanted to share that with you and, uh. Stephanie and Jim, that's the superintendent report, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, sir, officially for anybody who might be online. Our chair, Stephanie Grun, has shown up from her work at the State House. Chair, we'll, over to her. Ms. Grun.
All right, thank you, thanks everyone for your patience. It was a long day. Um, so yes, any questions for Mike Berry?
Uh, I do on the cell phone one, um, this during the school day, we're talking the academic school day because our school days could be. Could be, you know, we think of our school days as. Students could be here working on theater until light.
Yeah.
It says bell to bell.
Starting and time of the day.
Of the academic day.
The academic day. That's what I would imagine, I think the debate's going to get into, John, is bell to bell, what does bell to bell mean? Does that mean at the high school level, if I start a first period, end the first period, have a break, can they, you know what I mean? That will be debated. And, and, you know, they have talked about allowing local control. Um, this will be something that, you know, we'll collaborate with other people, see what the practices are being used. I'm, I know there are other places to put a lot more time into this than we have at this moment. Um, we can learn from them and and see where they're going, uh, but I'll, I'll update you. But I definitely don't think it's beyond, say, three o'clock, you know, so.
Okay, I wouldn't think so, but.
Uh, this, if it lands this way, this will be the strictest. Digital device policy in the country.
It, it does say personal devices, so people who want to bring their personal computer in instead of using a school issue computer. We're going to have to look at the law and see if there's an actual, because right now there's, I don't believe there's a waiver process, but there was talk about adding a.
We'll see how it all plays out once it gets through the, the, the governor's desk and and what, where it lands and then we'll respond accordingly. Uh, but it is trending to be a very strict. Law.
So this hasn't gone to the Senate yet, right?
Yes.
No, it has gone, so it's law.
No, no, it's not law, so the governor signs it. And if it, if our, if what passed does not agree with what the Senate has, it has to go to committee conference and then they. Then the governor will sign whatever is agreed to about that.
Okay.
We'll keep you updated.
Yep.
Thank you, everybody.
Yep, anything else? James, you'll quickly have a question.
This applies to our CTE. Experience as well.
Well. Stay wide.
Stay wide.
Hmm.
It's interesting, right? So is that any school that receives a dollar of public money?
Public, public charter schools.
Okay.
Because there was, there was discussion actually on House floor about ASD that does not issue computers. If kids bring their own in, are they given exemptions?
Right. Or if somebody uses their educational account or whatever.
So I think there is going to be some.
To go some private universe, private institution that's.
That would be culture.
Yeah, well, the vouchers, public money.
No. That won't, will not fall under that, it's, it says public, public or charter school, it's not the more money goes, it's public or charter school.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Central.
Okay. There's one. Um, okay, so my understanding is we're left with the constitution interpretation committee and goals. And we'll talk about constitution interpretation committee first. Everyone's good with that? Mr. Glover, I'd like you to do an introduction.
Sure, well, I, as I said earlier, um, the first page of the report is a written spray of process. Uh, rule. When, where, what we did, um, that's how we were able to gather information from each member and then. Uh, synthesize it into this report, uh, which is pretty much the five pages of, uh, printed spreadsheet. So if there are any questions about that, I'd be happy to. Address that.
So, the, yeah, so.
That was a question, yeah, or I can just continue, right? The only other thing I want to say is, must we want to talk about the process? Just sort of separate findings.
Yeah.
Stuff.
You want, Johnny, just go straight in?
Okay, no, no burning questions. So I mean, just seems like there's three main themes, uh, that come out of to kind of get all the pieces together. One is there's a need, uh, for some updated language here or there. There's some references to things that are not current practice, like. Uh, for example, uh, student planner, something that doesn't exist, so we need to determine what was that? And what we, what it, what should that be now? Is it the student handbook, is that the most obvious equivalency? Uh, but, uh, and then, you know, we have domain leaders now, they're not recognized, but we don't have coordinators who are recognized in the constitution. So there's some updated roles. Uh, so that's the updates piece, um, updated language. The second theme is there's some ambiguity, ambiguous terms, uh, terms that are not defined. An example is, uh, South Eagan community is appears as a depth-defined term, it has a capital S, has a capital C. Uh, but it is not in fact defined, so. Uh, as distinguished from lower C community, which is also used in the constitution, but they have very different meanings. But you have to infer what their meanings are. Um, so heating community with capital letters, uh, appears to be. Uh, the governing bodies, it appears to be the, the people who are represented on the constitutional interpretation committee. I think are squarely within the capitalized capital C, so we can communicate, so you've got students. Stack. Administration. Community council and board, so those five groups, I think, are well within the ambit of student. And maybe that is only the Soviet community, that's the, the governing responsibilities, so that's an ambiguity. Um, another ambiguity, like, for example, and, um, these are just examples to sort of illustrate the themes. Uh, the ad hoc hiring committee, um, has this notion that, uh, is to be convened for the hiring of specific positions. But it doesn't actually define. What those positions are. Uh, so some clarification on that ambiguity, uh, could be helpful. And, and then the final theme really is. Um, I think a lot of breakdown in, 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 in understanding. You know. Whether and how we are going to honor the distributed leadership model. That where the collaboration is expected from all those tasks with the governments, i.e. the Soviet community. Um, one of our public. Still here was talking about a three-legged stool, I think it's more like a five-legged stool. Really, with, with those five main groups and how we. How we share information, how we evolve the, the school, which is language and the constitution in a collaborative spirit. Where we all take responsibility for the decisions, where we all expect to make the contributions, where we're all expected to be respected in the process. Uh, in advance of decision-making to facilitate, say, this is a decision-making and, and go forward in that collaborative way. Um, so that, that is, you'll see that in some of the, the, where. The committee as a whole felt like, you know, certain areas were not being followed with fidelity that they, they imagined that they should be. So those are the themes. Uh, as, as I take it. In my read and my experience on that committee.
Okay. I'm just type making sure I have all the, this, the things written down to make sure.
Though it was, uh, three-word updates to monitor to current language. In handling some of the ambiguities.
Okay.
And, um. How we really do the collaboration piece. To evolve the school.
Okay.
As it, so you can communicate.
All right. Um, yeah, so thank you for the work that was done, because I think there's, there's a lot of detail.
Yeah.
In here. Um, and I think, uh, the language update, I, you know, I look at, we could just have. Like a, a small group try and do some update just on the language. And come back, so we, the, the ambiguous, like, if it's student planner, most likely student handbook, if that was just changed, that's something we could talk about.
You see, that, we could, or we could, you could ask, we, I guess.
Or we go down each and every single one.
Well, at some point, there could be a list of questions, a follow-up questions for the committee. Um, to see if there's consensus, understanding of what these terms meant then and what they, what they should mean now. That's a, that's a mechanism to. It tends to, to, to further task the committee to come back with its. Answers to those questions.
Okay.
You know, is domain leader a good equivalent part for, uh, area coordinators? Is that true? I don't know, just replace it just as you imagine it without context and experience from teachers. I mean, one thing, just as, that's why this might be important. Apparently, reportedly, I didn't know this, but member, community, uh, council or a, uh, committee member did. That those positions that are envisioned in the constitution never had an evaluation authority. So domain leaders do have evaluation authority, so that. So domain leaders do have evaluation authority, so that's. So, okay. That's a difference, and so that's a different role, it's a completely different role. So how does that, this new domain leader role fit into the constitutional framework? And the fault is, is maybe not so simple as just taking out one phrase and putting it in a note.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So there's a lot of detail in here and. To go, I mean, we could go top down, it would take us quite a while, you know, to go through some of this. But the question is, is it, is it worth going through each and every one? And we revisit. And, you know, because I, I just envision this taking a while, this discussion, or. Are there topics in here someone wants to address? That is highlighted, like some of the yes buts. I mean, we can talk, like, I look at the first example, that Sohegan mission statement, in the Constitution, the Sohegan mission statement. What's on the school website is one, is a different mission statement. What's on the school profile is actually here, what's in the Constitution. So the question is, you know, we have now have two different mission statements written around. Written in different places. How do we engage in that conversation of what is the proper mission statement? That we now have it out there, and I don't know when it exactly changed. Mike, I don't even, because I, that was changed somewhere on the school website.
Yeah, I think this went through, uh.
And this is what's always been in the Constitution, it was on the website, it's different. So, I mean, I can also see a working group that needs. Because this is gonna be a lot for me to.
So, I don't think tonight, this is my recommendation for, for tonight, is if there's something. That we can do as, uh, SAU administrative team or work with the building administrative team to, to, um. Prepare for the July retreat and help kind of see where we are currently aligned, assuming where we are currently. With our work around the framework. Um, and the mission statement of SU thirty-nine, see, this is the complexities of SU thirty-nine. The mission statement of SU thirty-nine is to engage challenges, support all students. And, you know, currently, each district has a version of their own mission statement, and it, it's a bit muddy. And I think people don't, uh, really use the mission statement that's in the Constitution. I, you don't see that. Being talked about and discussed at Sohegan, even when I was as the principal. And I think there's a lot of work to do with the, the, the Constitution. Um, and I, and I often tell this story, yeah, it is not a document. That influences the daily operations of, of South Eagan High School. Um, it wasn't when I arrived, and I think I told people the story, uh, when I asked some veteran teachers, the ones that have been retiring over the last few years. The Constitution is something that has not really been updated over the course of time. It is, is followed, it, it influences what we do, but it is not followed strictly. Um, and to take a quote from a, a teacher that, that I won't name, but it's been here for. Close to thirty years. The Constitution is usually referenced when someone wants to weaponize it or make a point to get something through. And that's, that was the, when I arrived, that's what I was told. But we use it to influence the relationship between administration and community council. That's how it was used here. Um, Maya, you can chime in on this. I don't think it's driving the work of community council on a daily basis or a monthly basis. It is referenced, it is referred to, um, it is, it is, uh. Kind of understood, but it is not something that have been up to date, updated. So there are probably things within that document, John, that you discovered, that you might have been reading for the first time and learning, like, oh, we do that, or we're supposed to do that. Cause I know that, cause I'm like, that doesn't happen. Right, we. We don't do that. When I go to find out from people, it hasn't been done that way in a long time. So I do think. A major overhaul of the Constitution. Needs to be looked at, and, and I don't think it's a meeting for seven fifty-five at night. I think it's a charge that we work on, and, you know, maybe we discuss. Further at the retreat, what we would like to see done with the Constitution based on what you found, and maybe find a way we can align it with the work that's happening. Cause as we get into the board goals, you can see through the, the documents that we attached, that it is the relationship. Um, or in democratic, uh, excuse me, the relationship between administration staff and community, uh, students. Um, is the work here, and. And you could see them wanting to, you know, desire to improve the democratic processes of, of Sohegan High School. Um, that's something that happens on a regular basis. They do have trainings, they do have regular meetings. Um, but I do think aligning the work that's happening with community council and administration. You know, kind of like an audit of like where, where it's happening, a further order, what's this, I think really needs to, to be taken a look at. Um, and I think it's a larger, much larger conversation. So in my head, when I was looking at this. There's a lot to it, John, you did a lot of, you know, uh, of the work. And like now planning out what we're going to do with this information, I think is a great topic for the retreat. You know, and, and then moving for the year. So, am I, I see your hand up?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to highlight, as I was reading this, we're kind of going off of that. Um, so I was just interested in, but in, on page. For section three, um, talks about. The. Four members visiting classrooms, um, kind of. How many students, um, according to the word that John aside, doesn't seem like that's been happening, um, but I just wanted to point out, that would be something. Worth revisiting.
As a positive thing to see.
As a positive thing.
And, and that's why I think we need to revisit this, because I, I think, um. There's been some changes over time about. And, and again, it, it is, it, we've discussed it here before, the comfort zone of. You know, board members walking into a classroom and how a teacher feels about it, I think. There is a discussion to be had, I mean, this was something that was in the Constitution. There was a little hesitancy about continuing that practice. And so I think that's why we as a board need to decide. Uh, you know, in, 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 in discussion with administration and hearing from the staff as well, and then, because it is the Sohegan community. If that's what you wanna see from the board, then we need to keep it in here and we need to encourage it. Um, or where does that fall? And these are the things we need to work out. During a longer discussion, um, because I think they're valid conversations to have, because it is the piece. And that's why I like the work that was done to break it down, and now I think we need to dig into those parts of. What do we want to be? And that's really where the striving this question. Mr. Manning?
I think one thing that remains consistent. And there's, there's some common themes that I took down for notes. First of all, I, I agree, it's not, not for a conversation tonight, like this is a bigger conversation, that's the first thing. The second thing is that there are some common themes that were, that are, that are throughout the entire document, that there are six of them that I have. Inconsistency between policy and practice, a need for clarification, deferish, um, definition of roles. Governance versus operational tension, lack of communication transparency, structural misalignment and cultural procedural drift. That when I read those things, and it gets into some details, and those words might not accurately reflect everything, but. It's almost, you know, this is actually like what community council is for. Community, like, this should be something that the board says, okay, we've got this document, right? This is the feedback that's come out of the document. I'm trying to figure out, I'm not sure what you guys discuss in your forums, Maya, like what the major themes are. But. The, you know, one of the reasons we moved here. One of the reasons I wanted our kids to go to school here was because this was sold as a democratic school. That students in the school would have. It was, it was a, 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 an institution that provided empowerment, and that students had agency. And when I think of agency, what I'm hearing is that students like yourself. Have the ability to. Get like a test run of what it's like to be in the adult world. I don't mean to say that condescending, but I mean to see that, like, really know what it's like to be in the adult world by true, being treated like adults. And having the, um, the accountability given to you, so you could act like adults. That's where the Sohegan Six comes from, that's where the Constitution comes from, that's the whole purpose of community council. And I could think of nothing better for the board to do than to go back to community council and say. Work with the principal. On figuring this out. The only thing about that is, I know it's a heavy lift, because you've told us several times, I'll be done in a second, I apologize, I mean to grandstand, but. Mike, you told us many times that when you came into the institution, I remember back when I was the board chair, we were trying to thread the needle between. Maintaining that. Culture, but also getting some of the rigor in terms of. Teaching, practice and everything fixed, right? Getting that foundation. Of the house fixed, while the house, you're jacking the house up off the foundation, right? Not easy. But the way the school culture, culture works, and I'll finish by saying, the way this school was founded. By a lot of people, many of them still alive. Where this was like a really important thing. And I don't wanna be on the board that kills it, right? Because I want that, I want you to have what my kids had. And I'm not sure how to thread the needle, other than to say, as a board, since we, they get their power from us, right? To go back to the community council and say, come up with a plan on how to fix this, come up with a plan on how to rewrite this, and work in concert. As the legislative body in the school with. The executive branch, which is the principal, and work together to craft something, so you can come back to the quasi-legislative judicial branch, which is what we are. The three-legged stool, to figure out whether or not it's something that makes sense, and all work together in, in concert. So now that's, that's kind of how I see this, me, one person, but. I will say it's extremely, as a board member who has a vote, it's extremely important to me. But that's maintained and flourishes, especially in this period in American history.
So, no, I, I appreciate that take, Jim, and, and one of the things that I remember loud and clear, like, I'm, I'm on my fifth year here. Like, SAU thirty-nine and, and as part of the Sohegan School District. It was very clear, I have, have this written down, manage the next iteration of South Eagan High School. Very clear for multiple people. And for me, yeah, I absolutely heard the rigor, you know, there's two people who were in the room when I interviewed, are sitting on my right and on my left. Who's, was saying, you gotta manage the next iteration of South Eagan High School. And Annie Emerson tells me in that same day, that in three to five years, forty to sixty percent. Of the staff will be retiring. And in fact, as people know, we've turned over a hundred out of the hundred twenty-seven. Teachers. So that hidden curriculum, that hidden culture, that institutional knowledge. And the uniqueness of this play function from ninety-two to now, a lot of that walked out the door. And as we manage that transition and iteration. We did our very best to bring on people who had the characteristics, right? And the personality traits that could come into a public institution like South Eagan, from a public institution or, or college. That is nothing like this place. So that's a challenge to take people who work in public education and fit them into. The way So, Sohegan High School operates, that was definitely, but when you do it in the mass droves of that many people. While trying to. In, you know, improve the academic experience, not just the rigor, but the overall experience for, for students and families. I think that's what we've been working on. And so now, as I look at, you know, you know, when we talk about Ted Sizer. And, and, and for me, Ted Sizer, you know, and the Coalition of Schools. Was a, a, a great thing. And my mentors, as I said often, were in the room with him, they went to Brown, they were his GAs. They were the one talking about, you, you can do something with Sohegan because of your background with the Coalition, but the Coalition is defunct. Now, the nine principles still exist. In, in theory, they're not actionized, because schools can't call themselves Coalition of Essential Schools anymore, because the organization doesn't work. And the tenth. One is, you know. There is a tenth principle, it would have been around equity, absolutely. If you talk to anyone who knew Ted Sizer, and the tenth or eleventh one would have been around. You know, schools' responsibilities are constantly evolving and meeting the needs of their community and their, the community's values. That would have been the other, and if anyone's ever come into my office. That sign exists there. Right, always has. And so we wanna be very mindful and thoughtful on how we do this. But, um, I don't wanna underestimate the lift that it would be for administration and council to do this work. Throughout the year, and I think having some more clear language and, and, and charges from this board that are developed at the retreat. Will help guide that work moving forward into the fall, so we can align it with the history of things. So that's where I'm at.
Yeah.
And so I just wanna kind of put that out there.
So before I ask for other input, my, my thought is, um. Is creating almost like a, a working group of some sort that involves community council. With students, involves community, involves school board, involves staff, involves administration. Work together to come up with something that can be presented through community council. And through the school boards, it does involve, as he said, the community, what does the community want and expect? And we wanna make sure this respects the community and also represents Sohegan. Because we can't have this as a school board policy and not follow it. So either it gets thrown out the door, or we evolve it and make sure that we are then, we have a document that represents who we are. And then it will also help administration and everyone, you know, with the guidance of. Sohegan. Right, the culture and the structure and all that. So, uh, I just want to hear feedback from others. On your thoughts, because it is eight o'clock, I, I'm just thinking a subgroup is a potential good way to go. Um, that involves everybody as part of the Sohegan community, capital S, capital C, because that means everybody.
If I may just respond to that, I, I, that may be a good. Idea, it may work to. To go back to the CIC, we have a representative from each one of those groups. That person could then be asked to go to their respective constituent groups and see who would be interested in working on. A task force or a, uh, that's representative of their interests. Um. I probably wanna recommend they find diverse voices from different points of view to get a true representative voice. And then do their work and provide their results, maybe.
The separate group, the separate groups, you can't work in a, except like, it's gotta be, that works and discusses and meets together, I think.
There, my, there.
Maya. Speaking as the council.
Yes.
I think that council representation will be very important, yeah, um, and that's, and I think the. Council would be very interested, um. To look into this, we've already been looking into policy of just around council law, it would be, um, good to get more board council involvement. Just in general.
That's your key.
No, and, and who, really, that just said that, Maya, because. Um. John, first of all, there's a lot of effort that went into this, and, you know, I, I do have a couple of questions in terms of the source, like, are these your thoughts? Or are these minutes from, from the meeting, number one? And then number two, like, who came up with some of these from a, uh, member feedback? Was it your interpretation of them? Or did people fill in a, a data sheet and then forward it off to you, and this is what we're looking at?
Uh, so everyone had, we have a reading protocol. That looked like this. Uh, and they answered the question, are we following it or not? And then there was an opportunity to provide their own notes.
There was a Google sheet, I believe everyone filled, was filling.
Yeah, they, and they're, yeah, they went, first it was a Word document. That we all copied and then were filled out, then that got reduced to a more spreadsheet format, it's a little easier formatting-wise and manipulation-wise. And, uh, if, if anyone put a comment in there, in their notes, then that comment is in here, you know, it's not attributed to anybody, it's a synthesis of all that. So, um. Uh, every, every member who will share any information or feedback is in this report, I guarantee that.
Because what, what I'd like to know is what the source of those, those comments are, is the student feedback, is this staff member feedback, is this administrative feedback? Or is this a board member, uh, feedback? Because I think that creates more structure in terms of the interpretation of whether or not this, this is an issue. Um, and I'm gonna challenge everybody a little bit differently here, and, and I like really what Jim said. Um, I, I, I think we're starting this at the wrong place, right? I don't think putting this on our retreat agenda, which is going to be enormous as it is, uh, to spend the type of. Um, conversation on something like this may or may not be, um, due, uh, for, for this particular topic without bypassing. The governing body of this, 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 this place, and that is community council.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think this body should refer this feedback to community council for next appropriate steps. And I think that is really the only action that we should actually be taking this, right? And so if we were to go ahead and start to meet at a board retreat and say, hey, um, board member responsibilities, I think every, and I'm just part of making up. I think every board member should spend three days a month inside a classroom, uh, observing and, and documenting, and bringing that feedback back to things. Like, it's inappropriate for us, right? And so the governing body of this, this place is community council, so starting there, and I think it's important, but. I wanna take a step before that, and I think it really comes down to what we've talked about in our SAU board meetings. Our strategic plan for this district. Our strategic plan for this district, right? That hard work that still has yet to be done, um, that we were gonna hire somebody to do, and then we put the, that, 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 that concept on the brakes. Um, because we as a community need to decide what this place is. And I've said this many times in SAU board meetings, we have no idea, we're still operating in nineteen ninety-two. This concept, this pie in the sky, this beautiful image of, um, you know, this, this, this open free society type of learning environment. And things change, things evolve. We do not play on devices from nineteen ninety-two for the most part, right? My Palm Pilot from nineteen ninety-eight doesn't work anymore, right? So you, you take a look at that type of mentality, that's where this conversation needs to start. And when both communities have an idea or a concept of what. So in, and I would call it two point O because that was more of a facilities type thing, but what's the vision and what's the purpose of this institution? Because I could tell you this, without that being answered. All this work will be for naught, because it's still abiding by this old methodology, this old process. That uh, the community may not have breaks in two years or three years. We need to really think about what Sohegan is, and I think that's where we start the conversation. So the bare bones minimum, I would actually make a motion to move this to community council. But before that, I think this should actually start with a strategic planning conversation.
And then thoughts, Mr. Manning.
I like what you're thinking, man, the thing I like most about what you're thinking is that. The, this is not about us sitting at a retreat, telling them like what their constitution is gonna play on. It's about sending this back to community council and having them start the process. I, I might amend what you're saying a bit in that. Potentially, these can run in parallel with one another. Because I still think it's a, it's a fruitful exercise for. I still think it's a fruitful exercise for community council to kind of dive in and do the work, you're already doing some of the work, right? There's already interest in that, right? Looking at this policy, um, going back to. When Peter Warburton were here, was here, and we were trying to figure this out, right? And that's a long time ago.
And he gave up?
Well, but the themes, the themes were pretty consistent among every single group we talked to, right? It was things that I don't, I don't necessarily know are gonna change regardless of technology or. What a modern school is, which is, which is a school that's empowering. A school with high levels of agency with their individual kids, democratic school. And a school where there is a high level of, of personalization, all of those things were repeated themes. Over and over and over again from the community that I would, I would be shocked, I'd be. You know, I'd be less shocked if I woke up in the morning with my head stapled to the carpet, because those things continue to get, I could hear about them now within the community, so. I almost feel like even if we have a strategic plan, oh, this is my thought, even if we have a strategic plan, and we definitely need that. I can't think of a better uh, project for a community council to take on than to start diving in and, and potentially. The stuff that community council might come up with, and I know it's only the high school, it's not all of the other constituent schools, but potentially. We could learn something from community council in terms of what this place needs to be in the future, because the members of community council for the most part are living it. Or not, I mean, we are to a certain degree, but now we're not living it like them, so just something to consider.
Mr. Glover.
Hey, I support community council taking a crack at this in terms of its, it's about working group. Principally because it, there are representatives from the five, it's Sohegan community groups. There are board, board member representation, there's community writ large, there's faculty, there's admin and there's students. So the five constituent groups are already represented on the community council, so, and there's more than one of them, so they can work together. And that's, that's could be very uh, efficient. Um, just to recognize though, community council is one of nine governing bodies that. Were this, this, that envisioned in here, nine, DPC is one. Right? They have their own roles and responsibilities to govern the Sohegan. History, um, the ad hoc hiring committee has its own roles and responsibilities and on and on down the line. So it's, and all of that power derives from us as school, as a school board. We, we delegated that, this authority, we said, no, normally in a traditional school, the administration would have all of this authority. We said, no, somebody back in some days said, no, no, we're gonna do it a little different, we're gonna distribute the decision-making authority. We're gonna all own our decisions, we're gonna live or die together by the success or failures of our decision-making. That's the essence of what this is trying to do. Um, so, I, I mean, we have to decide whether, I think we have to decide whether we believe that that is a, a guiding principle. That we wanna continue to maintain, then adding nuts and bolts it together to make it operational and make it effective, make it modern. Is, is something, some work we could be doing, but if we don't believe in that anymore, then, then we should just. Rescind this policy and, and go, go to be a traditional school again. Cause that, that is the core essence of, of what this is trying to do.
So the one piece I'm gonna add and, and I'm hearing what Mr. O'Keefe and Mr. Manning are saying. And I think I'm envisioning what they're saying. Where I was originally thinking of a group of, you know, a, a group of people includes students and staff and board in this. That's the beauty of community council, part of it, that group exists already, working together, and that whatever. Whatever they envision as a group that's going to work, there'll be some subcommittee underneath community council that works on this. It's going to include teachers and staff, you know, and, you know, and teach, you know, teachers, paras. Administration, board members, community, because community is involved in community council. It's gonna group all those groups together already, and they can run a process and like. Jim said, they are a piece of that legislative body. Where it's kind of like, once that comes through community council, because they have to approve it, it has to be approved by staff, it has to like, there's different. If you look at the very end of the constitution, the way to revise it, it kind of comes to us last. After it's gone through, but we're still gonna be part of it while they're revising it, right? Because we're sitting on the committee, it's not like they're gonna do it and none of the board members are ever gonna be involved. I think if all the groups will be involved. And the idea that they're coming up with that legislation, revising of policy. That goes through the groups that includes the board, and we're gonna hear about it during the process, I think. It, it kind of is the beauty of what the constitution, what the different branches of the government are. It's kind of is.
Asking community council with this effort is smart.
Yes.
Yes, I agree with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
I do have my time to Maya, to, can you tell us what you think about this?
Yep, um, I think this is a good idea, I think, um. I would appreciate um, council being involved in this, as well as more involvement with council. Anyone can drop the council, so if we are discussing this at council, you know, we have multiple stakeholders. If students are interested in coming and joining, teachers, staff members, community members, they can. Um, I think that if we are gonna bring this to council. Adding some sort of structure or protocols to what the task is that they actually wanna do, um, would be helpful. But I think this would be very good um, for council to not only just take a look at. The school, the community, but also to grow as a council um, beyond just proposals.
Yeah, because you have to take it to each of the, each of the advisories, the advisories have to discuss it. So that helps you guys communicate with all the different bodies as well, which is something you've been working hard on this past year.
Ask you one follow-up question? Do you think that this project would be good for the school? Given all the things, you know. You know, there's just been a lot that's gone on the last five years, right, with COVID and everything? Do you think this would be good for this, for, for Sohegan, the Sohegan community? Do you think it would add to the Sohegan community?
I think it absolutely would, um, just being a student who's only been here for two years, um. I think at times it can be unclear what kind of the path or idea is here. Um, and I think it would be very helpful for the school to kind of reestablish. Who they are as a community of learners and as a school, and what the goals and intentions. For students and teachers and everybody involved is. So I perceive that being very helpful for the students.
I move, we uh, open a public comment briefly, allow public comments on this. That's a motion on the floor.
During, during public comment, we'll, we'll ask.
I just made a motion to open up public comment to receive.
In second, okay. Um, a discussion, I think, if not those in favor of opening public comment. Okay, if you have public comment, please come forward, come forward to the. Well, can you come to the, and introduce yourself and say which town you're in?
Yes, Will Luke, Three School Street, Member of Community Council. I, I agree that that's probably the best place for it. But this is a heavy lift, I mean, this isn't a two or three week. Discussion within community council and then we vote on it, this is like. Six months, I mean, it, this is gonna take a lot of effort to really dive into it, so. I, I, you know, don't expect a quick turnaround, I mean, that's just me personally.
And I think because we're gonna be working on long-term planning and things over the next year, that as it all kind of coalesces. Hopefully all comes together, you know, there's a lot of, gonna be a lot of interweaving, right?
You know, cause yeah, yeah, right, there's gonna be a lot of back and forth, I think, between community council and.
Right.
The board.
But I'd like that we would be involving all the Sohegan community.
Oh, right.
Representation.
Okay, good.
Yes.
And you need to go so far as to solicit feedback publicly from the various venues that we advertise in. Hey, this effort is going on. If you're a teacher, if you're a student, if you're a parent, if you're whoever you are in the, in Mont Vernon and Amherst, you. Are A, you're aware, and B, if you wanna make contributions, you can, here's our recordings, here's our information, blah, blah, blah. If people want to engage, they can, even if they're not on community council, even if they can, you know. There's awareness writ large, would be very helpful.
Mr. Chamberlain.
I, I appreciate this con- conversation, and just to expand your thinking, just for consideration in the future, the. Democratic school governance, uh, Maya, you said, um, five kids per grade level is twenty and eleven, that's thirty-one kids. Let's say that's five percent of your population. That's a very valuable experience for those five percent of the population, is they do the outward democratic work. But I don't want the board, community council and others to get lost on the agency that is developed in the classroom. When students have a choice of what they learned, how they learned and how they demonstrate their learning is a way to get agency to all students. And the, the outward democratic stuff is for some students, right, who are engaged. But the true agency for all kids is when every kid has a choice of what they learned, how they learned and how to demonstrate their learning. In the classroom, that is the agency and that's the democratic, when in fact, we decide what we are going to learn in physical education. In this, and we have agents. So when you have these discussions about the future of the democratic, so I don't want it lost. To, to the public comment point earlier about whether or not that classroom experience is one that spans time. Well, I proffer that it spans time, if in fact a student has agency in that classroom. And one thing is, I never want this board, these people, and you wonderful people, to lose sight of all kids. Because it's easy to focus on the five percent of the kids that are outward, but it's seven hundred kids. And to hit agency for seven hundred kids, I proffer, is that in the classroom? So it can actually have an experience where they feel they made a difference and participated, and education is something not that is done to them. But they, they have the agency, so I probably, I just wanna make sure the classroom agency is not lost beyond the outward five percent. Just consider that when you're working on this piece, because the classroom is a place where students, all kids can have agency. Just something pretty.
I know that Genie has a comment, I just wanna say something really quick, Steve, because I, I feel what you're saying. Especially given what we're trying to do in the school, which is important work, and you guys done a great job. When I came on as the school board chair in, uh, it was twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, I met with Robert Mackin. Twice, um, and he was like, the first time I met him, he was like, you know, I never talk to people, I'm like, well, I desperately need to talk to you. And there's two things that stuck out for me from that conversation, he said, number one, he said. There's no more important relationship in this, in this school than the relationship between the principal and community council. And he said the reason for that is because when he was the principal, when the school was founded and was progressing, they were trying to figure out what they wanted to do. I've heard this from teachers who are now lo- longer here, they said that. There was, there's a real effort from year to year to get. Different types of kids on community council, because the school was behind it. It wasn't an adversarial relationship. It did not look at community council as being this, this, this thing that needed to be dealt with, it was something that. You could pull in a kid that, a student or learner, that maybe wouldn't typically run for community council. Maybe they, they loved, they would do, they did, they, they wanted to work on small engines. Maybe there was another kid that was a student that was introverted. Whereas a lot of student councils are all about popular kids in, in other high schools, I know it was when I was at West, it was what, what it was. And so I just wanna say that I understand what you're saying, agency in the classroom is really important. In fact, when we first started talking about the strategic plan to Steve's point, the thing that repeatedly came up was. Personalization and agency, personalization and agency, the world is moving toward personalization and agency. If you look at the best charter schools in the country right now, it's all about that, so I, I get you. This, but I'm convinced in talking to him that this can work as long as. Like when you, when you tell us, like, I just want you guys to remember, my thought is that. We don't, we shouldn't have to, because this is what you should do, this is the function that you should have, this is what Dana should be thinking about. This is what the, the dean of students should be bringing to their role at community council. I don't know how often they show up, they're, they're at every meeting, they should be there at every meeting. And I know this is gonna sound aw- awful, but I don't care if they have kids, they got a dying grandmother in the nursing home, that's what their role is. That's what my role is here tonight, I got a million and one thousand things to do back at the house, I work for Fortune five hundred company, I'm getting a master's degree, I'm, I am here. I am here, the thing that impressed me so much when I came into the school system from the get-go is you would walk in at night. Five o'clock, there were teachers and students here, I walk in now, where is everybody? It's a reflection of how we're managing that relationship, and I'm not blaming anybody, because you're right, there's been a lot of turnover. There's not, I don't think there's any blame to assign, I just think that it's a relationship. That we need to commit to cultivating, because we have a multi-decade commitment to it. That's in a policy that I can tell you right now, I will never vote to eliminate. Never, I am never voting to eliminate this policy, ever. Now, we can amend it, we can make it better, all for that. But this, as long as I'm sitting here, we, I will never vote to eliminate this policy, because I saw what it does for my kids. My kids didn't go to Harvard, but I'm telling you right now, they developed a confidence coming out of here. Around their agency, around how they make, how, how to operate the school, how to make function as adults. So now they're not pressured to go get jobs that they feel like they should have, because somebody else tells them to get it. They're out there blazing the path for their own life, their way. And that's how you get a Courtney Bangart, that's how you get a, a Michael Pitts, that's how you get a Pulitzer Prize winner. Doing that. That's all I gotta say.
Okay, that's a hard act to follow. I, I'm, I'm with you on the passion, that is for sure, and I, um. And I, I mean, this has been a great discussion, the first thing is that everybody has now read the constitution. Which I've been begging people to do for twenty years, because you could say, see even twenty years ago, that there were things that needed. Fixing and clarifying and just, just so that we all knew what our roles were, so. And the fact that you have um, suggested that community council. Um, carry this uh, weight is fabulous, because I know community council can do it. Um, I know that community council is made up of every single, it's the only governing body. Here that has every stakeholder representative, uh, the only one. Um, so I know they can do it, uh, as an example is the year that we spent when I was on community council. Developing a security plan, it took a year. And every single meeting was focused on one particular element of um. The security evaluation and, and the solution of that would work for Sohegan. So it can be done, um. There's some great leadership, and as you said, there are um, ten at-large positions. Um, on community council that are specifically designed for those who do not want to have to run against the popular kids. They get elected by. They get elected by members of community council and, and make speeches and, and they're not the typical kid. So it's, it's just the right place and, um, I, I do, I do thank. Um, John and this committee for getting the ball rolling. Um, I think one way that maybe you could incorporate, um. Steve's suggestion is that maybe you present this, can the current constitution to. Everybody in the school and advise it or whatever, have some sort of, um, um. You know, study on the current, um, constitution so that everybody becomes aware of it and then ask for their feedback. So there's a way to incorporate all those things. So I'm, I'm excited about this prospect. Thank you.
Summer reading list for everybody.
So before I. Ask for potential motion, Mister Stroger or Miss Peters, do you have anything to add in the conversation? None.
Which is just to, uh, Will's point about, this is a big lift. I think it would be very helpful for. There's some, the big themes. Answering this fundamental questions, do we believe in distributed leadership or not? Is there governance of authority outside of the administrative unit or not? Like, do we wanna preserve these things that exist? Do we wanna make sure that everyone, every, everyone? The board member, the staff, the student, the community council, and the faculty have. Uh, enough information to be able to make contributions, to be able to participate in the decision-making that involve the schools. Or not. Um, because if, if you say yes, the few, those are the themes that, that, uh. That we need, what people want to be preserved, then. You know, ironing out the language to, to, to make that workable and, and, um. It's something that we can point to and say, this is our seminal policy, that, like, this is our one ring that rules them all. I think would, would be a, a way to access it in a, in a way that can keep people mentally connected. And I'm not taking that much of time as it might otherwise take, it would be lost scrambling around. What does this mean? Cause it's all of one piece. My suggestion for community council is an entry point, the way of thinking about this.
Okay.
That's my, I think my last comment.
So what I'm hearing is, um, an interest in moving this to community council, so is there, uh, a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to request, uh, that community council take the work completed on the constitution interpretation committee. To date and develop a plan for the fall. Consider appropriate action for the Sohigan, uh, high school constitution. The kind of request that they provide a timeline of their work prior to this board's December board meeting.
Second.
There's, okay, and discussion.
Well, what's, what's the note, what was the bit about this fall?
Uh, they're not gonna do it during the summer.
Yeah, but.
Right, cause there's no, exactly, so start in the fall is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Update in December on a timeline.
Yeah.
Cause it's gonna take them that long to just.
Yes, so. Maya, who is not necessarily going to be our school board representative going forward, conveniently is the new communicator. For community council, so she was still part of leadership, so she, you know, in charge of communication. Can hopefully bring it back to community council and speak with leadership there and. I'm more than happy to join you in that conversation and help you out.
I'm gonna ask that we and Maya meet with the building administration before we just bring it to community council.
Sure.
I'm gonna ask that Maya meets with the. Uh, building administration before we bring it to community council. With the dean of students to develop a plan.
You want? Administration to develop?
No, 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 no. And before, you, you, the charge is fine.
Yeah.
And, and the mo- but I would like, before we just bring it to community council, I would like Maya to meet with the dean of students and principal to discuss this meeting.
Yeah, so like, that makes all the sense in the world, because I don't wanna put Maya and throw her under the bus to say, hey, here's this huge charge now with this eight-page document. And she has to now interpret it, and so come up with a game plan on how to best present it and propose it to community council, that makes sense.
There's also, the only thing I wanna add though is there is, there are community council, um, leader, like teachers that are leaders. And advisors to the council, would it make sense that she works with them to be able to present it? The information and.
I, I really do think that Dean of Students and the principal, you can determine how to bring with Maya and, and the executive leadership. And that includes the teacher advisors of, of community council to, to do that.
I think she can do it. So I think you can do it. Can you do it?
I think so.
I think so.
Okay.
So are you usurping the principal?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I, 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 I think, if I may, I, I think it's, your, your guidance, Mike, is spot on, right? So you don't wanna take a huge lift, cause that's what this is, let's just be blunt. This is an enormous lift and put it on to one student's shoulders. To now articulate to all of her peers about what the demand or the ask is. And so by her partnering with building leadership to say, how do we best map this out? So it's articulated in a way that accomplishes what we wanna do, um, makes sense, makes, it makes absolute sense.
I, no, I, I, yeah, I think, uh, maybe, Mike, you might have missed what Jim said, is that he actually is agreeing with you?
Yeah.
That Maya can't handle going, talking to administration.
She could go with the dean of students and.
So, yeah, yeah, and that's, I think, that, that would be most appropriate to make sure that, you know. Maya has the support of the dean of students and the advisor of community council as they present this to community council as a charge.
Yeah.
That's what I think. That's where I was getting at.
Yeah. I think, cause it's the relationship.
So, yeah, and I will tell you, like, this will be another enormous lift. For the, the staff and the students and the administration of. Sohigan High School. And then it will have to be fit into the overall. Charge of SU thirty-nine, because Sohigan Cooperative School District is part of SU thirty-nine. So there's a lot of moving parts to this, and so, you know, I'm gonna process this as it goes on through June and into the retreat season. And then we'll figure out where we're at, but I, I agree with the motion, you know what I mean? I think that's where it should go.
Any other comments?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
I'm, I generally agree with the motion, um. And. Yeah, we draw.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, uh, those in favor? Any opposed? That's. That's pass. Okay, thank you. Maya, let us know how we can support you. We're here for you. And I know it's end of the school year, so. Let us know. We're here for you.
Have a lot of fun this summer.
We are here for you, I promise. Um, okay, so thank you for that. I know it's, you know, it, it was a lot of work. And John, again, I wanna say thank you to you and the entire CIC group that worked through it, because it gives us a really good starting point. Cause it, again, it's school board policy, I wanna make sure we're able to follow school board policy, and I think it is time for an update anyway, and make sure that we're all in the same. And a reaffirmation.
And updated by not changing a word.
Correct. And it's, then gets us all going in the same direction as a start, okay? Thank you, so, um, remind me, we have to do board goals discussion? Is that where we didn't do?
We have not done the board goals discussion.
We could, I, I like to make a motion.
Yep.
So, I motion that we table the board discussion until the retreat, so that we can have a full, and then, full, full, kind of like. Discussion with administration and. Let our heads clear on it a little bit, um.
And there's multiple revisions that.
Cause there's a lot of stuff there.
There's a lot, I, so I, you'll see in there, there was, there, there was a draft that we sent that's like a template format. I ended up sending out to everyone via email, something that I had started with, because I realized I had sent it to a couple of people, but not everybody had seen it, so I thought everyone should seen it. Jim has since sent me different versions of things and we haven't synthesized it all, and there's a lot in here. And it's gonna be a discussion of, again, I, I think it starts on what is the appropriate level of our goals and.
Yeah, I'll tell you why I make the motion before you decide to second or we have discussion is because, um. In thinking about what these goals are. Like, what are board goals to begin with? It's gonna, it should be a lot of input, like, we should be working in concert with. Mike and his leadership team and all of that on. Like, getting to common ground around things that. You know, what, what are the out, I, I look at this process like an outcomes. This is like, the board goals are like an outcomes thing. And without their, without their headspace around thinking about that thoughtfully and coming to the table with their own thoughts, whatever, I don't. Maybe it's more of a retreat thing, but that was just my thought process.
And adding in the information that was recently added about the evolving our priorities and PD and stuff like that, I think we need to synthesize that. Just in our headspace.
Yeah, I, I told Jim before you walked in, uh, I added the work around the, the building goals. That have been essentially evolved since twenty twenty-one, you know, that, that second year of COVID. And we kept building towards it, building towards it, and I wanted the board to have knowledge of the work that's happening. Uh, at Sohigan, so you see the draft goals for twenty twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, you see a document with. Seeing how the priorities and goals evolved from twenty-three to, to now. And then you see a slide deck from a presentation that they had, uh, in a, in a working session with the. Sohigan staff on the twenty-first of May. So it's just, you provide new information with this. So you can, you can, uh, navigate it.
Good, thank you. Good day.
Mister, if you look like you were gonna say something before and then.
You may as well remind everybody, board goals are about what we want to accomplish, what we're pushing next year, and so now we're deferring this until July. Uh, to be adopted probably in August or September. So you're looking at a goal timeframe of September, October, November, December. January and February. So that's like seven months, if we wanna throw in a little bit of March in there as well, right? That's really what we're looking at, and so when we formulate these things, have to be realistic. They have to be something that we can accomplish, and they have to actually work in conjunction with the superintendent's goals. We don't wanna throw all of us on this big gigantic crazy track that's gonna go so far right. That we're missing the focus of what we're trying to accomplish as a district and what we've actually had presented to us at meetings by the superintendent. Cause that's the path that we wanna go on. We all voted to support that. And so any goals that we come up with have to support that. What do we wanna accomplish as, uh, as a board? We wanna go ahead, we want presentations, we want better communication, we wanna have the ability to go ahead and, um, you know, bring a cow in there. Who knows, right? But something specific and achievable. Right? We don't wanna do something that's eighteen pages long, because we will not do any of it.
We think I would add to some. Would there be, we have the public, public hearing now at the end of this month. That may afford an opportunity to go into a meeting. To advance this. Forward to some degree, we're only gonna maybe find the answer and be, and, and use that time that we're already convening to. Set ourselves up for better success, have to be treated in July, just leverage, maybe take an hour or something and forward this discussion point.
We gotta remember though, the space is gonna be the only one there, and it's a big lift on her shoulders, so I don't know if that's fair for her.
Well, it's more of an opportunity, you kinda do your point. There are holes for us to discuss, are, are these smart holes? Is it specific enough? Is it gonna be achieved in the timeframe? Is it, um. Is it, is it obviously support the, uh, administration's goals? Is it, is it potentially? Or is it maybe obviously not? We can sort of separate some weeks from some chat and make some progress. Uh, I think if we continue to have conversation amongst ourselves, um. To, to have a better and more efficient conversation, then the next, and the more we talk about it, the better off we're gonna be. With such opportunities.
Um, she's wondering what, she wants to know what the public hearings all about, cause she wasn't here.
I wasn't here, so I'm like, what public hearing? What am I, okay.
Yeah, so I'm trying to respect what us was having back and forth.
Yeah, sorry.
Um. If I were the superintendent of schools, I would not wanna have a board goal conversation without him. That's me. Right? I would wanna be a part of that, I'd wanna understand the rationale behind certain concepts and ideas. I wanna be able to add my input, like, hey, I think bringing a cow to the building is crazy, it's gonna make a mess, so, all that stuff, right? So whatever that goal is, as the superintendent, I'd wanna be a part of that. And if we're gonna have that conversation without him, we're setting him up.
Without him?
Why would we have it without her? Well, that's what we're talking about.
If it would happen at the public hearing and he wasn't here.
Oh, the public hearing, yeah, yeah, no, I thought you were talking about the retreat, I apologize.
Okay.
We would record, we have the owls, I mean, we're not gonna, I wouldn't envision making any particular decisions. This is just discussion, we can record, superintendent can, can provide his feedback when he has an opportunity, I mean. It, it just is a fundamental level thing, if we have an opportunity to talk about important things and maybe save some time, so we're not starting them as late as, as it is. Same and lose half the year. It's important, we're, we're convening, why not leverage the time to make some progress in some agenda item that, that we haven't been able to get to yet?
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, this is the second week of July. We all lose half the year, we all get into a room, we have a retreat, we talk about what's gonna make the ship run, given what we're doing. And as a board, you know. One of my, one of my concerns. Being back on the board, and even, even back when, you know, was on before. Is. Board members confusing their role and what a board member does, what they shouldn't do. What a board member doesn't do is run the schools. They, our job is not to climb into the school and evaluate teachers and classrooms and, um. Hey, you want the presentation to look like this, bring a cow or sheep, whatever, we've been talking about. Our job is, as a board, is governance and our, the particular focus of the board is outcomes. Outcomes. Board members are outcome oriented, because when you're outcome oriented, I'll give you an example, they got a math program right now, I think they're doing a stellar job. To me, what's missing is saying, in three years, we want eighty percent of the students. To be hitting, you know, state level competency on the state exams. We need, as a board, we should be demanding that level accountability as outcome. Right? And I don't know if they like that or don't like that, but my feeling is, what that allows us to do is say. This, do you agree? Do we not agree? Maybe they say, ah, maybe it's a little less, maybe it's a little more, we have a conversation around that. And we decide on that outcome, and then every meeting. Make an update on how they're moving toward that over time. Over time. Right? Because. This is our chief executive and. We, we set the direction of the ship, their outcomes we feel like we need to achieve based on, well, hopefully we'd have a strategic plan, we don't have it. That's coming, but we can say these are some of the outcomes we're looking for. And that, again, it goes back to. Some of the tension I feel, I feel being back is a little bit like, okay, we got our thing, you got your thing, this is a relationship. It's a relationship between us, just a relationship of trust that we need to develop, and that's why I think. This is probably something we should table to the retreat, because in that retreat, there should be a real discussion around, hey, how do we wanna work together? How do we get to common ground? How do we develop outcomes that are meaningful for everybody that are achievable, like Steve said, and I think he makes a great point. How does that tie into the things we wanna do long term? How do these things tie into what Amherst needs to do or what Vernon needs to do? We don't operate the silo, you know, all these taxpayers are paying into the, you know, same bucket for the most part. Um, so that's just where my thought was, and I think that Steve, you mentioned a lot of that already, right? Like, that's, that's, that's critical. Um, once we start saying, this is how you should do it. This is how you should do that. We're not educators. I'm not, I mean, I, my wife's got her CAGS in education and. I was in a Manchester, was in Morrel High School for a year teaching Spanish. But I don't consider myself to be an educator, I don't know enough about it. That's their job. That's my view.
So, um. One thing I'd like to ask is, yeah, we're, we're not gonna have this, we're not gonna discuss goals tonight, um. Move it. To a retreat. Okay with everyone? The one thing I would ask if we do though is. Either, you know, it. What I'd like to do is have, you know, if there's a. Word document I sent out that had my original. Goals, it had communication, governance, facilities, there's a table we sent out that talked about, um. Communication, community engagement, government strategic vision. Policy of education, are the topics okay in those, and we just want things that are measurable? So we can start the, so we can start with topics that people think are important to put in as goals, I think that's one thing I just.
Framework.
The framework, yeah, stick with the framework.
Yeah. I mean, there might be other things that come up, but the foundation has to be the framework, why have the framework if you're not gonna support it, right? So you, you're trying to craft, you, you need, you need this to craft.
I just wanna find out.
Yeah, framework, agenda outline for, for a retreat.
Yeah, I would say, yeah.
Yeah, and I appreciate the efforts you're putting into to get that feedback from us early on. Uh, so we can define that in that timeframe. They're just talking about, and, and then.
Cause I wanna be talking about X and we wanna talk about Y, I wanna make sure we're talking about the same thing, yeah.
Those, those paths can cross, I believe, but yes.
Yeah.
There was a.
Yes.
It was a board meeting where, I can't remember, maybe it was in. It was a board meeting where, I can't remember, maybe it was under new business or other business somewhere. Where. Some ideas were bandied about by certain members and. Um. Were potential goals. And I don't see them reflected in, in this. Yet, though, in this output. So I thought that that was gonna be captured somewhere. Um. But it's not yet in the. Variety of goals documents we have. You don't, you don't remember.
You're talking about the future. Cool.
It was, I think it was under the topic.
Yeah, yeah, twelve certain things. I look at those as, as things we're adding to the agenda. Those aren't board. Oh, goals.
I mean, okay.
Yeah, those things need to address what are, like, our board goals. Each of those things need to address our board goals, right? Cuz that's why we would want to put them on an agenda. So in essence, they're going to be, they should be reflected somehow.
You should.
Does that make sense?
My opinion is it'd be helpful if those were also captured in sort of. Some way next door to the goals because they are goalie, they were goal-esque.
Okay.
And if we're, and if we, we already have these agendas and we will need to prioritize all these things that we wanna discuss.
Yeah.
And how do, how does one connect with a agenda, agenda item and should be able to connect it to a goal? Unless it's administratively necessary agenda item to operate the school system, right? Dominant, collecting nominees for personnel and so on and so, so. Uh, so I'd like to see those working together. So we can, I can envision like how. Yeah. Um.
Okay.
Yeah. There were like, I don't know, six or seven multiple people.
Twelve. There are, there's a list of twelve or thirteen items.
Okay, yeah, there was, it was a, it was a good conversation. There were multiple people contributed to it.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's the list you and I looked at before.
The one we used to build the agenda at, yeah.
Long term.
Right. And maybe now that it's been a couple of months, maybe the, us individual members and.
Yeah.
Might want to add to it or. It was sort of been thought into the system there.
Which is facilities. Yeah, we can make sure they all fit in there and, um. We'll continue, we'll, we'll evolve this and we'll have that discussion. If there is a topic or a specific thing you feel needs to be added or into the goals. Please send that to us. To Jim and I and we'll make sure we. Continue reform. We've. We revise this. And at the retreat, I think we've had a discussion. Hopefully come out with where we are.
Okay.
Okay. Was there anything else you guys didn't cover? Was that?
Did everything.
Did everything? Okay.
You just didn't have to have, I didn't get the public comment.
Right. Um, and do we have any need for non-public? Anything with personnel or anything? No. Good. Okay. So any public comments? Two of two. Anyone in the room? No, we're good. Is there anyone online?
There was one person online with no hands raised.
If they're interested in speaking, please raise your hand and we will ask you to put your name and turn your camera on and.
And then she's got, I'm confident.
I'm confident.
Okay, I can't see who it is, who it is.
Confident they don't want.
Okay, so we will close public comment and I will take a motion to adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Second. No one else wants to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? Yeah, second. All right. Thank you.